Roll call, please.
Councilmember Len.
Here.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Here.
Councilmember Mackin.
Here.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Here.
And Mayor Davis.
Here.
Uh, city attorney, do we have a report out from closed session?
Yes, Madam Mayor. In closed session at six thirty on item D, the BRE Brisbane owner, LSA versus City of Brisbane, uh, the council received a report and provided direction to the city attorney. On item E, the conference with labor negotiator, council received a report and provided a direction to staff. In the following meeting at six forty-five, there was one item, which was the city's litigation over sequoia inadequacies with high-speed rail. Council was given a report and again gave direction to the city attorney. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. We'll now move to the adoption of the agenda. Do I have a first and a second to adopt the agenda?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Lentz.
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
And Mayor Davis.
Aye.
Okay, now we will move on to item B, awards and presentations, uh, with Women's History Month. So go ahead and read our proclamation. Proclamation of the City of Brisbane, City Council designating March twenty twenty-three Women's History Month. Whereas, Women's History Month had its origins as a national celebration in nineteen eighty-one, when Congress passed Pub L ninety-seven dash twenty-eight, which authorized and requested the president to proclaim the week beginning March seventh nineteen eighty-two as Women's History Week. In nineteen eighty-seven, after being petitioned by the National Women's History Project, Congress passed Pub L a hundred-nine, which designated the month of March nineteen eighty-seven as Women's History Month. And whereas, the twenty twenty-three Women's History Month theme established by the National Women's History Alliance is titled, "Celebrating Women Who Tell Our Stories." This theme honors women in every community who have devoted their lives and talents to producing art, news, and social media. And whereas, we recognize women past and present who have been active in all forms of media and storytelling, including print, radio, TV, stage, screen, blogs, podcasts, and more. This timely theme honors women in every community who have devoted their lives and talents to producing art, pursuing truth, and reflecting the human condition decade after decade. And whereas, from the earliest storytellers through pioneering journalists, our experiences have been captured throughout time by a wide variety of artists and teachers. These include authors, songwriters, scholars, playwrights, performers, and grandmothers. And whereas, women have long been instrumental in passing on our heritage in word and in print to communicate the lessons of those who came before us. Women's stories and the larger human story expand our understanding and strengthen our connections with each other. And now, therefore be it resolved that the City of Brisbane City Council recognize the importance of Women's History Month as an opportunity to recognize and honor these brave, accomplished, and influential women who told and continue to tell our stories. Today and in the years ahead, their dedication and shared desire to give voice to the voiceless are critical to keeping us informed, entertained, and aware. March second, twenty twenty-three. And accepting this proclamation is Vanessa Garcia, owner of Seven Mile House and a storyteller herself. She's the author of an award-winning book, See You at the Seven: Stories From Bay Area's Last Original Mile House. So I'd like to welcome you up if you will come to accept the proclamation. I will give you this. Thank you so much. Does, does the city communications team like, want a picture? Maybe?
Yes.
Okay.
This is our first picture.
Speak, speak to.
Oh, speak into the microphone so people on Zoom can hear you.
Um, I just wanted to thank the City of Brisbane because, um, the City of Brisbane has been able to give us the opportunity, give me the opportunity to tell the story of Seven Mile House. And at our hundred sixty-fifth year, it is very important that we, um, that we may let everybody know the importance of its history through its trials and tribulations, through everything that it's gone through, um, up through the pandemic. And we still struggle with so many things, but we need to know that whatever we go through, we need to make sure that we always document that because that is how we learn and that is how we get better. So thank you so much to the City of Brisbane for recognizing this and recognizing women who tell stories because it's so important. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Vanessa.
Okay, we will now move on. Oral communications, number one, and I do have a few slips here. These are for items not currently on the agenda. And first speaker is Michelle Salmon.
Madam Mayor, Honorable Counsel, um, it came to my attention recently that, uh, the City of Brisbane is soliciting to have the Habitat Conservation Plan amended in order to move forward with the quarry development. I am extremely upset about this, especially since that proposal has not even come before the council. I'm just going to read you a few things. This is a, a part of an email. I am emailing to follow up on the understanding on how to proceed with the HCP amendment for the quarry development proposal and some other activities identified. We understand that the consultant team for the quarry developer has had some conversation with you about the amendment need. This is to the Fish and Wildlife Service. And the County and City of Brisbane want to confirm the process understanding with you as we proceed. Based on the discussion we had back in May last year, I'd like to reiterate that is you and US Fish and Wildlife's understanding that the proposed quarry development does not have take coverage for the Calippi silver spot and the bay checker spot butterflies. An amendment for, of the HCP needed for quarry development that would result in a take of Calippi silver spot and bay checker spot butterflies. The original HCP did not provide take coverage for the San Bruno elfin butterfly at the quarry and the, um, stated amendment would be required. Therefore, an amendment to the HCP would be needed if quarry reclamation activities would result in the take of the San Bruno elfin. The County and City are prepared to address the following items on the HCP amendment application as soon as possible. An amendment to the ITP to provide take coverage for the quarry development for the, um, Calippi silver spot, bay checker spot, and San Bruno elfin for any potential impacts to these species from the proposed quarry development. Obviously, it goes on and on. This was, uh, two of our staff participated in the meeting, John Swicki, I know Julia Ayers did. And she was quoted as saying, "We're going to get this done." I'm sorry, the council hasn't even seen the proposal yet. An amendment to the HCP is a serious thing. It involves a take of endangered butterflies. There are not enough acreage for the butterflies now, and I am absolutely horrified. This is like the Northeast Ridge BS all over again. Please put a stop to this nonsense now. At least, you know, look at the proposal for, you know, one point four million square feet of freight forwarding space in the heart of the mountain with twenty-four-seven truck traffic before we go and amend the HCP to satisfy the quarry developers. I, I am just beyond belief when I saw this. And this was an exclusionary meeting. Um, San Bruno Mountain Watch was not allowed to participate, and neither were some of the other real stakeholders of the mountain, not just the, uh, City of Brisbane and the other people that showed up. So I am, I am really upset about this. You can tell I'm upset, I'm shaking. I feel like I'm standing up here again, repeating the same warnings that I repeated about the Northeast Ridge development. I am absolutely stunned that this is happening without your knowledge. Thank you. Or maybe you do know, but I don't think so. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dana Delurth.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. In the last planning commission meeting, um, a connection to the Bay Trail was approved. And it is merely a sixteen-foot-wide granite path to run the entire length of the no, uh, western side of Sierra Point. I don't have the money to appeal the decision. I think that the public deserves better than a path. That this is totally without consideration of other amenities. And while one commissioner kind of winked and said, "Oh, could you throw in a few amenities here?" I would like to know that you understand what the public trust is about, that we expect better. We expect better than a granite path. And I will be asking in a later part of this meeting that the Bay Trail be included as part of Sierra Point Open Space Plan because it can't be fragmented. And this is a perfect example of there being nobody at the stakeholders' meeting, no public person that said, "Hey, what about a, a, a bench, a, a garbage can, something?" No. Nobody there to represent the public, just a path. If you guys believe that that's all we deserve, do nothing. But if you have the capacity to work with the stakeholders to support things for the public, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak at this time?
We have a raised hand from Anthony Walker.
Okay, Anthony.
Hi, uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, I wanted to say a few words, uh, in support of the Sierra Point Open Space and Parks Master Plan, but is that, um, for later in the meeting?
Yes, you'll have to wait until later in the meeting.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak at oral communications, which are on items not on the agenda? Okay. Seeing no one, we will go ahead and move on to the consent calendar. Do I have a motion to, um, adopt items C through F?
Second.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Lentz.
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
And Mayor Davis.
Aye.
That brings us to old business item G, Sierra Point Open Space and Parks Master Plan Process Update. And, um, we'll start with the staff report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, make a couple of brief comments and then I'll turn it over to the Parks and Recreation Director. Um, I'll turn it over to the Parks and Recreation Director to talk a little bit about the process. So I just wanted to give a few comments on, um, you know, how we got to this point. Just for, um, background for, um, members of the audience, and, um, I think most council members are aware. This current process is really driven by three events. One being, um, a twenty seventeen amendment to a development agreement um, with the site that is now being developed by Phase Three, um, in which they, um, the, the owner owned what was historically called Parcel R, um, out by the bayfront. And they, um, provided that, uh, to, they did not own it, excuse me, they had a leasehold interest on it. They surrendered the leasehold interest to the city. Uh, so we take, took control of that, uh, that site. They provided three hundred thousand dollars, uh, to the city, uh, for, um, Sierra Point park development, and then they, um, also agreed to a, uh, development fee on, um, the, uh, project that they were building, which will generate about a quarter million dollars. Um, the second event was a permit application that came in from Health Peak in the, on the shore project when they wanted to connect two buildings, uh, with a, a, a bridge, um, over three different floors. It was about twenty thousand square feet. There was a, uh, one-time fee of about one and a half million dollars, uh, for that project. So that was, uh, created some funding. Um, and then the third event was, um, uh, and then actually the first two events really kind of drove the, the, uh, the kind of the wherewithal and also the desire to do some park planning out there. But in the midst of all that, the owner of the hotel site, BDI, had met a couple of times with the, um, Sierra Point, um, Subcommittee, and they went through their development. Um, and, um, we gave them a couple of directions. One was to focus in on just their site, um, and not, um, any land, um, outside of that. And then the, the other was that the city would, um, be looking at doing our park planning, that they, uh, we didn't want them to be kind of doing the park planning that would come into the public area. They do have a fairly significant amount of open, open space, park space that they're going to propose in their project that will be available to the public, but it'll be on, uh, their private property. So those three events were kind of the driver for, um, moving forward with getting a consultant onboard and to do the, uh, the park planning. So I'll turn it over to, uh, Noreen, and she can kind of walk you through the process to date. Uh, we have our consultant here, and he's going to give you a brief presentation also.
Thank you, Clay. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. Uh, the city's original solicitation for letters of interest on the project generated fifteen responses, um, reviewed by the council Subcommittee. The solicitation outlined the city's aspiration to develop an open space and parks master plan for Sierra Point to meet the recreational needs of both Sierra Point tenants and the public and to promote integration with the surrounding areas like the city's marina, the San Francisco Bay Trail, and neighboring businesses. The request to prospective firms indicated the city's desire to reimagine over four acres of parks and open space on the eastern side of Sierra Point adjacent to the marina. Acknowledging the study area may be expanded to examine the entirety of publicly-owned land. The master planning process evaluates long-term opportunities and constraints for public land to position the city to pursue future funding opportunities. The council Subcommittee selected four firms to place on the shortlist to move forward in the process and directed staff to draft an RFP to issue to those firms. The project ambitions laid out in the RFP recognize the opportunities for increasing public benefit, addressing climate change, and meeting the challenges of sea level rise. In spring of twenty twenty-two, the council Subcommittee reviewed and discussed the proposals received and elected to conduct interviews with three shortlisted firms. The, through that process, the Subcommittee selected CMG and recommended the award of contract to council in July of twenty twenty-two. CMG began their work in the fall by conducting a series of meetings with city staff and the Subcommittee comprised of representatives from the Brisbane City Council, Parks and Recreation Commission, Open Space and Ecology, Complete Streets Safety Committee, Idea Committee, and the Public Art Advisory Committee. The initial phase of the project intended to conduct a comprehensive site analysis, including identification of site constraints, weather conditions, and infrastructure to be preserved. In addition to meetings with the Subcommittee, public outreach in the preliminary stage included a pop-up event at the annual day in the park, as well as an online survey shared throughout the Brisbane community. The survey sought to understand how people currently engage with Sierra Point and their priorities for its future. Technical constraints, stakeholder ambitions, and open space improvement opportunities were defined for the sake of the initial draft report. The discovery phase provided the basis of Task Two, which was exploration. The second phase of master planning hinges on public engagement and includes initial development of alternative approaches to open space master plan concepts and coordination with stakeholders. The draft alternative scheme served to illustrate opportunities and to solicit stakeholder feedback for the creation of a preferred plan. Public engagement to date in the exploration phase has included an open house workshop, an online survey, tabling at the farmer's market, and a meeting with the Sierra Point Yacht Club stakeholders. Further public participation in this phase is scheduled to include additional onsite engagement at Sierra Point, establishment of a marina facilities focus group comprised of Sierra Point Yacht Club members and Brisbane Marina birth holders, stakeholder meetings with Sierra Point business representatives, and expanded outreach to the broader Brisbane community. With that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Willett Moss from CMG, who's going to share a brief presentation.
Good evening. Good evening. Good evening.
There you go.
Hi. I have a pleasure to be in front of you, Mayor, council members. My name is Willett Moss. I am a founding partner of CMG Landscape Architecture, principal. And I think it's a great opportunity to be able to come and present this project yet again to some of you. It's a little condensed over past presentations. Um, I know that Councilmember Mackin has seen it twice and other members have, I think, uh, Michelle Salmon has seen it probably more than anyone else in this city at this time. So all that said, I've tried to abbreviate this version, um, but hope it can, uh, provide some clarity into the process and where we're at and where it's going. The slide this up right now is a project timeline. And the timeline on the top that you see September through March, was the first timeline for the project developed with city staff and included, um, identification of specific meetings and points of engagement. This was, uh, developed with city staff through what was called a public participations plan. As you can see, the schedule below has been modified radically since that time. And you can see, in fact, Phase Two, which we're in now, exploration is extended into March, and we imagine that it would wrap up in March. That means, next slide, please, that a resolution resolving a plan from all of the input that we've gained in Task Two would happen in early spring. So we have an initial phase, Phase One of discovery. This is when we're getting our head around the project opportunities and constraints. Exploration is where we're at right now, where we have developed different scenarios for, um, improvement of Sierra Point's public lands based on what we've heard and what we understand about the site. And with the culmination of this phase, we would then resolve a final plan. Next slide, please. Now, master plans are basically roadmaps, right, for the future. I think you're all aware of their value in coalescing ambition and thoughts, getting something down on paper so that everyone's speaking to the same thing, and ultimately, understanding how you can fund and implement a vision. But they're not the, the exact design. The point of this is that we're laying out a plan that should provide enough guidance in development of Sierra Point over potentially decades. So if you look at this plan, right, it starts to put on the, the timeline on the screen, it starts to put this effort that we're in right now in some context where we're looking at sea level rise, which is what we're tackling, right, in terms of twenty fifty, two feet of sea level rise, we're looking at sea level rise for twenty seventy. So our plans are actually addressing conditions way out in the future, potentially don't even have to be acted on now. Again, a flexible roadmap of potential and possibility. Next slide. We began, um, the discovery phase looking broadly at the regional context, looking at sea level rise regionally, looking at connections regionally. We looked at all of Sierra Point. Understanding the context of the area that you're dealing with is, is the foundation for developing anything, right? And so through looking at Sierra Point itself, it became super clear that there were things that we weren't going to be able to address in our planning. But man, we know that connection to downtown is key. And it starts to inform how you might think about the development of Sierra Point in terms of access and the types of amenities it might offer becomes part of the conversation. We also know, of course, that the marina is there and, uh, it's of great value. And it's not something to be messed with, essentially. Our mandate, in fact, was to keep the marina and improve its operations if possible. Next slide. On the screen, you see a red line. This was, uh, what was within the, um, the contract that we received that identified a general area of focus. General because in the contract, track language, it talks about the potential to expand the area of study. And this is inevitably what may happen in a master plan process as you start to talk to more people, as you understand, start to understand the various systems within the landscape. So landscapes are very different from building sites because they are more of a fabric of interconnected things, like an ecosystem. So you have circulation and you have sea level rise moving against that. Um, and then within the system of pieces, the infrastructure to parking and circulation, we can find homes for active use. All of this is to say, where we have landed in terms of exploration is looking at the white area, which are the public lands in their entirety at the, uh, east side of Sierra Point. Next slide. This shows the east end of Sierra Point, uh, illustrates the topography with contours. The things to take away from this are the green line, the dashed green line that represents the top of the landfill, which corresponds to about sixty and seventeen feet. That's significant relative to projected sea level rise over time. And it puts Sierra Point in a really good location and place, um, in terms of protecting resources into the future. The other, um, elevations to note are nine feet at the existing Bay Trail and ten point three feet at the current king tide plus storm surge event. You know that water is overtopping and coming and sitting in the southeast corner in the parking lot, and we have water backing up through the sewers and drains, which are causing emergent wetlands to form. Salt grass and pickle grass is on site. The fate of the marina, I don't even want to opine on, but you can see that the top of the existing breakwater is around twelve feet. Next slide. This is the existing condition, and I think if you can scroll up and, uh, show the images clearly that are on the bottom. Recent king tide event, these are all from the most recent storms. And you can see how close they are to the Harbor Masters Building, how close they are to the promenade. Next slide. I'm not sure if you can shrink this one or make it fit to screen. Anyway, this area, a hundred feet back from mean high water, is subject to BCDC jurisdiction, Bay Area Conservation Development, um, Commission, who have oversight over water edge boundaries. Any development done within those areas has to comply with their targets for sea level rise mitigation. These three sections, there's one more on the bottom, show two feet rise at twenty fifty, three and a half feet in twenty seventy, and the bottom one shows twenty-one hundred. Where we are up to, um, six feet of sea level rise. And you'll see, which I mentioned before, the fact that the top of the landfill is out of that water level. That's great news for you, not counting for groundwater coming up or what have you. But what it illustrates is that the existing promenade and the marina need to be addressed. Next slide. Okay, parking. I think there are about, um, fifteen acres within the publicly-owned property. I think there are about eleven, twelve acres of asphalt paving, majority of the site is asphalt. The anecdote I heard is that that parking was built, yes, to serve the marina, but it was also built to serve as an enticement to developers. If you want to come build here, we have ample parking for you. So the question has always been, well, do you really need all this parking? We're currently, there are a hundred, uh, eight hundred and eight spots. Based on the California Division of Boater and Waterways Marina Birthing Facilities Design Guidelines, the marina only needs three hundred and forty-eight parking spaces to serve the marina. So then the question is, well, how many spaces do we need? And that's where we haven't arrived yet. And that's part of this process of the exploration phase to understand what, in addition to the marina parking, we need to find. And that's, comes back to the conversation about connectivity from downtown Brisbane. How do you get there with ease and comfort safely? And it also comes back to what kinds of amenities are there that are going to bring people down here. So parking is a conversation influx, but there's a commitment to deliver the parking that's necessary for the marina. The only question is, where is it located? And how do people get from it to the docks conveniently? Um, and we have now formed the Subcommittee, uh, or Focus Group that Noreen mentioned, um, to actually drill down on those aspects of marina function, right? Excellent. As I mentioned earlier, the operations and function of the marina, including the yacht club, were never in question. These are elements to leverage, to, uh, sustain, reinforce, and, and make more efficient if possible. There's a whole world of conversation around. There's a whole world of conversation around some of these amenities. What seems to be the most reasonable thing to do for the public bathrooms, for example, outside of the scope of our work, is to move them onto the water so that they're floating. This is something that seems prudent and appropriate in the long term, right? As we're talking about addressing the marina relative to sea level rise. The yacht club obviously can stay where it is. We are looking at it in terms of the potential of it moving as a scenario, just to provoke conversation. It's not a proposal, right? There were two points of consideration there. The Harbour Masters Building needs to move. It's going to flood in near term. Where does it go? Could it go to where the yacht club's sitting now, relative to having advantage over the water? And then the yacht club could move, and it could start to become the centerpiece of the core of the open space at the end of the viewpoint in Parc Sainte-Laur. Again, none of this is a proposal. These are scenarios, looking at possibilities and potentials. Next slide. As Noreen mentioned, we have, we think, many points of engagement within the discovery phase. If you scroll down, there are, as I said, many points of engagement with a lot of people. The public participation plan was developed, again, with the city, and our understanding at the time was that the subcommittee was actually representative of the collective of stakeholders that were most, what's the right word? Most interested in the project. And I think that there's, we're not trying to pull the wool over anyone's eyes or anything. In terms of public engagement, as I showed in the lengthening of the process and the original timeline, that was all about creating space for more engagement. And I think moving forward, that would remain the case, moving at the speed of trust. Next slide. So we've had many conversations, online survey. A lot of the feedback has resulted in the general ambition of what's described in the text on the right hand side. But it's of a place that's primarily about nature and is primarily a passive recreational environment. Yes, bikes, the bay trail. Yes, jogging, yes, play. You could teach your kids to ride the bikes. It's not a place for tennis courts or basketball courts and so forth. So nature is the primary focus of this environment. And then we're looking at the kind of program that can fit in to that environment. Understanding it as a venue for big civic events, it then is a place that obviously can come alive and be super vibrant. But those are relatively less frequent occasions, right? But the park and open space has the capacity to absorb these events for Brisbane. Next slide. So out of all those conversations, these principles were set up. These are basically an expression of what we've heard. They're framework for how the plans are developed, welcoming and inclusive, a place that's authentic to Brisbane. If we've learned anything, it's how much people of Brisbane value the community, how it's special, how it's unique. And for our part, we're trying to manifest in these various schemes what we've been hearing. A unique identity accentuated by art that inspires community pride. Beautiful, durable, place to enjoy every day. Include varied amenities for daily use. So again, this is places an invitation for folks from city center, all in a natural setting. Place for respite, place to meet your neighbors. And of course, dealing with resiliency, sea level rise, habitat creation, and carbon sequestration mitigation. Next slide. So looking at all of the discovery work, constraints and opportunities, the conditions out on the east end of Sierra Point, a diagram emerges, it's pretty straightforward. There is an acknowledgement of the functionality, the pragmatism of the Harbour Masters area, the work shed, the courtyard, the parking, the yacht club, the yacht club parking, and so forth. That's all down at the south end. It's a functional area. And then the north of there becomes an environment that can be much more naturalistic and is an opportunity and a place to bring an event program, bring people down, serve people who are living in the city center. And with all of this, parking can be reduced, like I said, 108 spaces. The marina itself, half that, less than half that. Acknowledgement then of a fringe or perimeter condition that's shown here in green that allows rising sea levels to come up and over the existing riprap. Next slide. And you see that with the planting diagram where there is a wetland condition, a fringe around the perimeter in the lowlands. Like I said, it's already emerging at the north end of the site with pickleweed and salt grass. Then that planting would, wetland planting would rise up into an upland planting. This natural vegetation would be the dominant characteristic and quality of this space that leaves the top of the site, the flat area, open for some use, parking, lawns, plaza, play, what have you. And then vegetation for stormwater treatment, based on all of the vehicular ways. Next slide. Terms of circulation, there's a loop condition, if you could scroll up a bit, please. And for vehicular access that takes you through the site, the circulation would be the drive aisle, ideally of much of the parking. There'd be a dead end and drop off at the functional end, at the south end of the site. And the bay trail that I'll describe in more detail in a moment is consistent around the perimeter of the site at the wetland edge and is doubled in size, providing room for EVA, emergency vehicle access, all the bike users, all the joggers, and potentially even people who are dropping off their sails for the marina use. Excellent. So as I go into the different schemes, and I'll be quick, they all share some common elements. There are pieces that are consistent or foundational to each of them. And one is this idea of the native wetland upland planting that I described. There is a bay trail and marina access that's tied to that wetland edge. We heard loud and clear the desire for small craft launch facilities to be included in the master plan. We've heard from many that it's too windy. We've heard from others that this is the place that it needs to be. It needs to be resolved through this conversation or by an expert in kayaking. Multi-use lawns, multi-use parking areas that can become plazas. The value of having multipurpose spaces is that they ensure that your environment is enduring, right? You're not plugging in a single use and a single program piece. You're saying, wow, this is a super flexible space. It can be used for many different things, so it has more value over time. Topographic features, the way one device to make it an interesting place, an exciting place to block wind, to create shade, to frame views, is to use earthwork and topography. And this takes us to bay views and overlooks that are inherently part of the Sierra Point experience. So again, we're just trying to leverage all of the attributes of that place through this work. And all of this is about connecting people to each other and to their environment. So the social spaces are the end goal. Next slide. This is what San Bruno Mountain must have looked like before the freeway was built, before the train was built. This is China Camp up north, but you can imagine San Bruno coming down into marshland. This is indicative of, obviously, a different scale, but having a wetland fringe at the bottom and upland planting up slope. Next slide. Here is a section at that edge condition. Without a pointer, it's hard to describe, but hopefully you can see the existing promenade. It says current bay trail location underwater at the king tide. The proposal in all schemes is to take the bay trail, at least double its width, and move it up slope on the landfill edge. This moves it to the elevation 13, which takes it out of 100 year storm events. And this is the fringe condition that addresses sea level rise for your entire public property, where it then meets the conditions off property. On the south side, it's already been addressed through the recent construction. It's out of sea level rise concerns through 2070. Excellent. Other common elements are the idea of a boardwalk connection to the marina. The length of walk from parking to the marina is not significantly longer than it is now in our proposals because we've made that connection more efficient, ideally. That's carried through any plan development. Small craft launch, like I mentioned before, there's an opportunity at the north end or the south end to introduce a small craft launch. Next slide. Naturalized promenade, bay trail edge, the where now there's a small concrete asphalt path that is the esplanade. It can actually be something much more gracious and more interesting to walk on, to jog on, to bike on. Next slide. Multi-use spaces, I mentioned, these large flex lawns, parking lots, if they're not being used by marina goers, could be used for food trucks and special civic events. Next slide. Talked about these topographic features giving identity and character, this unique and distinct to this environment, framing views, leveraging the views, blocking wind, and artwork that can, again, also be about making something very specific, very site-specific and unique to Sierra Point. Next slide. And ultimately, as I mentioned, a goal to create social spaces. People can meet each other, meet their neighbors, hang out with families, and have a comfortable environment, out of the wind, in shade, in sun, to enjoy the views, prospect over the bay, connection to water. Next slide. So I'm going to cruise through the three schemes that have been circulated. And again, these aren't propositions, they're not proposals for a final plan. They are to prompt conversation, just as they appear to be doing. But to get everyone on the same page, there is an ambition based on the RFP that was issued by the city to create public benefit, to address sea level rise, and deal with resiliency. The plans all do this, and they look at just different character and experiences that we think evoke what we have heard to date through the discovery phase. The things to note in the plans are, the north end is a super significant site. It's an incredible place to be with the views of San Bruno Mountain, with the views of downtown San Francisco, with the views of the bay, with the views of Mount Diablo. The southern end is an overlooked, underutilized, fantastic moment on the site. And then, of course, the middle is an obvious place, Parc Sainte-Laur. So within that framework, you can imagine parking and things of utility between those spaces. In any case, you can see in this plan diagram, the bay trail in yellow, set back behind the wetland fringe, and then the native planting coming up slope. In this scenario, we have Play Mountain, a landscape of discovery. It would be a place of intrigue for adults as much as children. And then on the south end, we have marine terraces. There's nothing like it in the Bay Area. It could be basically an artificial series of steps and tidal pools that take you down into the water, could allow for small craft access. In the middle, multipurpose lawn and plaza environment. Next slide. Some images evoking those two key moments at the north end and the south end, marine terraces and tide pools. Next slide. Gardens by the bay, the idea that the north end is anchored by this sculptural moment that are immersive gardens. And with, in all of these schemes and in these gardens, there are places to hang out, places to picnic, social spaces, large group picnicking. The middle of this scheme is characterized by an amphitheater overlooking the bay and a large multipurpose lawn and shade structure at the Parc Sainte-Laur. And then the south end is characterized by an artificial beach, inspired by many that we've seen in Toronto, in New York, Montreal, and most recently, in San Francisco, in Crane Cove Park. Next slide. Images evoking what this environment might be. On north end on the top, these gardens on overlooks, south end, the beach going into the water to provide water access. Next slide. And finally, Brisbane ramble, this idea of immersive, heavily planted landscape that creates spaces to picnic in, to socialize in, to hang out in. Or just if you're with a kid and they're learning how to ride, you're taking your scooter around, meandering through, jogging through this environment. The north end itself is anchored by an overlook lawn, informal amphitheater looking out over the bay. The center is again characterized by multipurpose lawn and plaza. And then the south end, in this instance, is Marsh Wetland Park, distinguished from the wetland fringe just by access, potentially a boat launch, but also boardwalks that move through it. Next slide. And so, next slide, I think I'll stop there. So where things sit in terms of process, and it's a very standard process for all of our planning projects. There's a period of discovery, period of exploration, and then there's a synthesis and resolution of final plan. We're in the midst of that moment of listening and getting feedback and getting information that would allow us to resolve a final plan. And the reality is, as I said, this is a roadmap, could be in play for the next 30 years perhaps. But it starts to focus where you want to invest your time, money, political capital. And in terms of sea level rise, and in terms of habitat creation, in terms of the conditions of the RFP that we put out, I feel really confident that the plan does that. And the conversation now is like, well, just how many parking spaces are there? How close should they be to the water's edge? Do you really want just planting, or should there be a pump track? Leave it there. Thank you.
Maybe you want to wait up here for a second while we have questions. Is there anyone wishing to ask, will it, any questions? Or staff, any questions?
I do.
Okay, we'll start with Councilmember Cunningham.
Okay, so, Willett, thank you for that. While this grandiose plan sounds very interesting in the big scheme of things, I'm going to take everybody back to the staff report of July 14, 2022. And I want everybody to listen to what was said in the staff report. I took this transcript directly from YouTube. And this was my understanding of the scope of this project. CMG to do landscape master planning at Sierra Point will cover open space, that is, the new parcel that you got swapped for which was an old restaurant parcel. It is also the green space in front of the marina, as well as the fishing pier in this. And it is to do a master plan at this point. What happened in the transcript is it's a bit garbled, but I am reading it. In short, that was Parcel R. Now, if we could bring up Attachment D to the original contract, I would like everybody to see what we agreed to back in July. We're not really looking at a sequer process because we will do that as we get into the individual projects that need to get approved. But CMG is going to be working with a group of stakeholders. We anticipate the stakeholders to be varied in this one. We know you have talked with the subcommittee, and subcommittees have suggested the players be as varied as the people who are at Sierra Point Yacht Club, the people who own boats in the marina, the businesses that are located at Sierra Point, as well as community members in Brisbane, to make sure that all of our voices are heard. We're also looking at different advisory bodies of being members of stakeholder groups that we're going to be interviewing, that could include the Public Art Committee, et cetera. And it goes on. That's what the staff report said. Then we have the City Council Agenda Report with the Landscape Architecture Services Proposal from CMG dated April 18, 2022. At that point in July, that had not changed. And on the second page of that proposal was a schedule, was a project understanding. The first step would be to do to complete a constraints and opportunities analysis. I'm assuming the constraints would have been sea level rise, is that correct?
Any number of constraints, yeah.
Right, okay, but that would have been.
One of them.
One of them, okay. So that should have been identified very early in the process. And then there's a schedule, there's 16 week process, and then project area, C Attachment D. That's not Attachment D. I want to see what was in this original contract because that's what we voted on. And the problem I have today is not what you're presenting because we do need to look at this project overall. However, this is not what we voted on. So we don't manage in Brisbane from the bottom up. We manage from the top down. So therefore, this problem that looks like it wasn't brought back to council, which it should have been, the moment we realized that sea level rise was not going to allow us to build our park, that's what we voted on. That is not what we got. So some point after we agreed to do this project, it changed. And at no time between July and November, when the first renderings were brought back to the subcommittee that included the entire front of the marina, where we notified that it had changed. I want to know why it changed, and I want to know how it changed because there was no communication with me about this. But I will take full responsibility because the buck stops here at City Council. But we were not aware that we were going anywhere further than Attachment D in this particular contract with you. So I'm not So I'm not down on you, I'm down on my counsel. What happened? How did change? And where do we get? How do we get here? Because I think this entire project now needs to come back to the full council for discussion to see how we want to proceed. Because I didn't vote on what you just showed me. I did not. I voted on something much smaller and the moment you figured out the BCDC. And I know people don't like acronyms, so it's the Bay Conservation. Development Commission. The moment. We found out that the restrictions that would be put on us for anything that we can do at the marina. That project should have been put on pause and brought back to the council to figure out what we wanted to do. That did not happen. I am not happy. Your presentation is lovely, but that is not what we voted on. Thank you.
I have a question for staff, but if I may. Just looking, this is attachment D. Is this what you're talking about, Karen, this? This picture here?
That is attachment D on the left.
Okay.
There was no mention of expanding the project in the contract either, I will say. A lot of the verbiage used here tonight was not used in this contract. I want to know what happened.
So. Noreen is, so I'm looking at two photos here. Is only the one on the left was shown, not the one on the right?
The one on the left is attachment D that was included in the award of contract.
In the order of contract, okay. And then we have this other picture on the right. And that is. What was that in?
Public property.
Yeah, let's just show him the public property. Okay.
Is it public property or this is, this looks like the area that you've planned for though, because you've planned. All the way down to the south.
That's the city on land.
That's the city on land.
But your proposals tonight incorporate all of this?
They show. Within that white line footprint.
Right, so there are elements, there are elements though that like. That you've created that. Go all the way to the southern.
Yes, because you. I don't. You're not going to look at things in isolation. Such as the Bay Trail connections and sea level rise.
Yeah, you know, I mean. I hope that for tonight's discussion with with us and with the community. That that. We take this in a positive note. I mean, I understand about like. Perhaps. Karen, you're not feeling really good about. What was, say, presented to us in July? And then now you're seeing. This. And then somehow it's different?
No, Cliff, what we voted on is a different contract than what was presented tonight. That is my problem. The subcommittee should have brought this back to the full council for reconsideration. That did not happen. Why?
You know, I. Is that something that we should be talking about now in the council discussion or do we have other questions in regards to? What has been shown to us? I mean, I, I mean, I'm hoping that that. In the end, we we come together as like, hey, how do we, how do we look at this thing as a, as the complete picture of? What is the public's? Property, which, you know, is what I felt the scope of work was. I mean, I know that we have a difference of.
If we have a contract. That's the end of the story for me.
So if the, if the, if the. If the consultant has gone. Beyond what you think that. Their scope of work was and they haven't charged us any extra additional money, they, this was the the charge, you know, this was the. The cost for the the work and here's. Under the. The understanding of the consultant, I think of staff as well, was to look at. The public space, not not just this confined area.
We don't make unilateral decisions. This is a council of five people. This is what we agreed to. This is not what we got. We need to bring it back to the council and figure out our steps forward. I think there's a great path forward.
Wait, is that?
But it's like, I asked for apples and we got oranges.
I think that's what, I think that's what we can do right now.
Yeah, I think that's what we're doing right now. I mean, I just, like, that's, that is what we're doing.
So I. Well, it.
May I volunteer some stuff? I believe that, may I, sorry. I believe there's language in the contract that talks about going beyond the boundary. I think there's actually language within the contract that says work may extend beyond the delineation here or something. But I will add again, we're in a phase of exploration. You can retract, we can draw a line around any of the evaluations that we've made. And reconcile a plan that's within that footprint. But at least now. You all have context. With which to make those decisions. So you're, you are, like you said, in the place.
So I think we can save discussion for like how we wish to proceed. On this project for later, after we've. Asked. Staff questions and heard from the public. And then I think the five of us will. Make a determination of how this should move forward. So I think we'll absolutely. Address that. Does anyone have? I've spent significant time asking questions of staff. Even though this is the first time I've really gotten a full presentation. So I feel after this and after conversations I've had with staff over the last two weeks, pretty caught up. Does anyone have, so I don't have any questions for staff at this time, but. Does anyone have questions for staff or for the consult?
I do, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
Will, you mentioned. Find it habitat preservation being a major consideration along with carbon sequestration. Could you point out on this plan where that takes place?
Through all the planted areas, there would be an ambition of created, creating. Habitat value. So as I described.
Habitat for who? That's what I don't understand.
And insects.
Okay.
Like, you know, predicated on natural systems.
Okay, so you're saying with the greenery, you're doing carbon sequestration. And then you mentioned the perimeter condition will allow sea level rise to come up over existing riprap. Have we discussed that with the marina?
The harbor master has been on the. Advisory Committee, the tech.
Okay, but, but he doesn't, he's not the head of the marina.
The harbor master?
No. That would be under the jurisdiction of our city engineer.
Randy. Clay, Randy.
Yes, Randy.
Randy, Randy's been in all those meetings too.
Okay.
There are, there are two options to address sea level rise relative to access. You can raise the existing promenade. Which doesn't seem in terms of construction sequencing to make any sense. Or you can build a new walkway behind it. And this is proposing an economical. Efficient solution of building a new walkway behind the existing. Which Randy and Andrew have reviewed.
At the point where you were given some guidelines from BCDC. Was there any thought of, again, contacting Randy as head of the marina to discuss? There's, there's an overlap of considerations between the two areas.
Noreen was present, the head of. The director of your rec park department was present in our meetings with BCDC and Randy. And Andrew were kept abreast of our conversations through the work that we were doing.
So you had discussions about the effect this might have when you learned the BCDC guidelines? On the actual marina itself?
The marina is not our scope of work, but we're trying to keep it within our understanding and thinking so that. It's maintained. Again, the idea of building inboard. A new bay trail so that you're not disrupting mariner access. Until waters come up.
Well, I'm just saying the considerations for the marina and the considerations for the park area actually overlap.
They do.
Because to get to the marina, you've got to go through this park. So that's what I'm just saying, were there discussions? At any point through this about? How these were going to overlap?
Yes.
With whom?
Randy and the technical committee and the subcommittee.
Okay.
It's been presented and conversations.
Okay.
Are what they were.
All right, thank you.
I actually have a question. So I know that with sea level rise, obviously. The area will change. And the distance, you know, to the, to the boats. At the marina will likely change, but. Do you have any concept of? Now with the new proposed parking. What? That delta is. In distance from parking to. Say dock entrances, like dock, if you look at the, the. Parking lot where there's that existing sort of. Ramp. Wooden ramp and then you enter like dock three or the docks over there. And you say we're pushing that back, but then obviously, you know, the, the shoreline is coming up too. What is the, how much further away are we looking at?
We have that analysis and that was presented in the meeting with the yacht club. Last week and what's interesting is that. One, paths of travel, two, the docks are not ADA compliant. As they are. But as they should be. That said, there are drop offs down by the promenade now, right? And so we are proposing relocating those somewhere. But the interesting thing is that in the plans that we have. The actual points of travel, not only will they be ADA compliant, but they'll be more direct and efficient. So the lengths are comparable or just slightly longer. When the parking's pushed way back like it's shown, but it doesn't have to be, it can come forward, which is the discussion to have with the focus group.
Because it looked like, I mean, they're very. Kind of. They're kind of hard to see on the renderings. Because they're so thin, but it looked similar to like what you, what we have right there, just that one sort of wooden ramp. So you're. You're proposing multiple of something similar.
There would be paths until they hit the wetland, at which point they could be causeways, or they could be bridges, or they could be boardwalks, yeah. And that variation I just listed just shows you where we're at. I mean, that wouldn't be determined for years.
Right. And so you're saying that the sea level changes. Would be. A necessity by twenty seventy or? There, there was multiple different.
Twenty fifty, it's going to impact. Based on the modeling that we have to work to provided by BCDC. And I've been curious, will sea level's even risen? And I just read this weekend that it's been measured at eight inches since eighteen ninety. So maybe they're on track.
Okay. Anybody else?
I have a couple of questions, Madison, so. You know, one of the things that you said in your, in your presentation, Will, it was, you know, to create public benefit while also addressing sea level rise. And you know, I, I think of the public benefit, you know, I think of. The entire public, right, the entire community, you know, folks that go out there. And of course, the boating community. So I. Yeah, I wanted to pick up on one of the questions that you had calling, you know, like when you look at the. The. You know, the renditions, right, you have the different layers, the wetlands, the uplands and. Looking at those pictures, it makes it seem like there's like this green barrier between. The marina. And places where they would park, right? And it just kind of gives you in your mind like, okay. There seems to be like this barrier. And I know that's not your intent. But, you know. You know, being able to, I think, show a little bit more detail in, in how. The, you know, the parking and then the access from, you know, for the boater to his boat or to the docks. I think would be helpful. In trying to just kind of get a better understanding. So is that something that you could, you could demonstrate?
Yeah, again, we are meeting, I hope, with a focus group, Marina Facilities Focus Group, that's composed of members of the mariner and the yacht club and. We'll just work through that stuff. I was literally at the yacht club right before I came over here. And had some interesting conversations where there's clearly just a lack of understanding, right? And that's on us in terms of how we're communicating. Or drawing, but it's also a reflection of where we're at in the process. Again. There's much to be figured out.
Yes.
And it's a master plan. There's much that won't be figured out. It's just a framework.
No, absolutely. And I know that, you know, that's, that's something that you've, you've mentioned multiple times that you're in this part of the. Of the process, you know, the exploration process where we're still gathering, you know, in- information and. You know, the. You know, part of. The, you know, the, I think some of the angst from the boating community and it was nice going to the. The stakeholder meeting at the yacht club that you presented with with Colleen and just getting that that feedback. You know, was the potential movement of, of the. Of the yacht club. And, and, you know, based upon a lot of the feedback that we've received. From the yacht club members, they love it where it is and, and I think you've demonstrated in, you know, some of your slides that. You know, the yacht club location is, in regards to sea level rise. Is. In a pretty good place, might not be, you know, a hundred years from now. But, you know, chances are that the building probably needs some significant work a hundred years from now anyways. But like you're saying, like, you know, this master plan, it's. It's taking that higher level and it's looking at a really far out horizon. So the things that might be in there. Aren't not necessarily things that are going to happen, they're just. Potential suggestions, right? But. It just seems like. That maybe leaving the yacht club where it is. And not having any kind of potential options. Might, might be better. Would you? Do you think that's, you know, a good suggestion or?
I think that might be into discussion, don't you think?
Okay, all right. I just wanted to get, you know, Will, it's kind of take on that because I know that's, you know, kind of a. Major issue. Okay, yeah, you know, I, I, I'm ready to hear from the public.
Okay, I have one last question and then we'll open it up to public. You said there's eight hundred and eight parking stalls out there now, and then according to California Division of Boating and Water Race. Only. There only needs to be three hundred and forty-eight. How many? Are in the renderings that you've shown? An estimate of how many are retained?
In that zone, they're in that range. It's really crude, but yeah, in the three hundreds.
Okay, so close. Obviously at three forty-eight, right? At least three hundred and forty-eight?
They, they're, yes, certainly.
At least three hundred and forty-eight, if not more, okay.
I would. There is ample room to move parking, increase parking, modify parking.
Okay, thank you. I'm sure you're ready for a break.
So can I make just one comment? You know. I was on the subcommittee and had, you know, a few minutes. Here and there when we met as an entire group to make comments and, and hear responses. And then. When I got the presentation of the three different possible views. You know, the big takeaway that I got from that was that. It wasn't just one. Pick A, B, or C. It's that all of these things can be combined or uncombined or, you know. Manage together to achieve whatever Brisbane is looking to do. And one of the takeaways I got when we did the walkthrough of the property with the entire subcommittee. Was that. You know. There's no way to just change. One little section of the park because sea level rise is going to inundate wherever that wall has not been changed. So if you don't allow. Or you allow seawater intrusion in a certain area. It doesn't mean it's not going to go into the other areas. And that's why the entire frontage. I think in their mind, once they found out from BCDC. That sea level rise was going to be this big of issue. That's why they encompassed the entire front of that property so that they could. Alleviate the intrusion risks. And, you know, it wasn't condoned by anyone. Necessarily in the subcommittee that the scope of work was going to go beyond the initial contract. It was just that that was. How the. Their renderings would make sense. Otherwise, you're building. In an area that is going to be an isolated island with sea level rise. So I see why. The consultant needed to go outside the initial boundaries. Of what the project may be. And give an idea of what the entire frontage would look like. And that's. My only comments there. So, thank you.
Okay, well, we have a lot of members of the public here and we want to hear from everyone who wants to speak. So I'll be giving everyone three minutes. And if you pay attention to the podium. On the microphone, there are lights, so when it's green, you're good to go. And when it's red. And when it's red, you need to wrap up. And I believe it'll switch to yellow when you have about 30 seconds left. And I have a number of slips here. If you're wishing to speak and you have not submitted a slip, please do so with our city clerk. First up, we have Quincy Bragg.
Hello, members of the council. Thank you for listening to us out here. The, the plan, my first impressions of the plan as presented is it pretty much completely ignores the marina and its needs. In hearing more from the consultant and from the city, it seems as if the city happened on some money and figured they'd better spend it on planning a park. But the city already owns the marina, has a great deal invested in the marina. And this plan pretty much completely ignores the marina. The consultants' people who were at the January 31st meeting admitted they knew nothing about the marina or about boats or boating. I think that the city, as it goes forward, needs to consider revising the scope of this contract or rewriting it completely so that both the park area and the marina are considered as a single entity. The city needs to maintain the marina that it has a great investment in. And it needs to allow the marina tenants who are the primary users of that area at this time to have more input into the plan. And the plan needs to reflect the needs of those stakeholders in the marina. And that, that pretty much sums up my point that the city has not taken into account the marina, its tenants, or its financial and community stake in the marina. And the park doesn't make any sense without taking the marina into, into consideration also. Thank you.
Thank you. The next slip I have is Dana Dover.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. I guess I'm back in the past when we were thinking of this being a way making place of, of something that you want to encourage people to come to, not just limit to 300 parking spaces. So I will just continue with what I was going to say. As it, and I would, am thinking of ways that the Sierra Point could utilize sea level rise and some of renewable energy. So as an educator, when I have 48 seat bus to take my students on a field trip, I would not choose this park. But if I taught renewable energy and there were experimental testing grounds, or if I taught physics and there was a skimming pool, I would pack my kids up, start an invention competition and invite them to design watercraft and renewable energy systems. But we need a vision of renewable energy park to draw nonprofit organizations together that could make this happen. To paraphrase Michael Barnes, this park should be something we don't already have. Crocker Park has bike paths. The city has tot lots. This is where I ver, uh, take my own comments. Where is our public art gallery, our city museum, our public amphitheater? In other documents, I have expressed that this open space plan should include the Bay Trail and that some issues will involve BCDC and integrated waste management. Other issues like future transportation and connections to South San Francisco via a pedestrian bridge. And I suggested a Cala Trava style sundial bridge, but could be simple bridge would involve South San Francisco. Are any of these groups stakeholders, are they weighing in? I would love to see us bump this up a notch and consider other needs. Consider what looks like from the air and what doesn't exist elsewhere. A renewable energy garden doesn't exist in the Bay Area. And how about some fun?
You're ready for the video?
Sure. Did, did you get to the bottom?
Not yet.
Cause there's a little more. On just the ideas of solar farms, remote controlled boat festivals, retractable enclosures. And if you haven't seen a lantern festival, my God, they're spectacular. So.
We also have the video.
Right. And I just asked that we not do music on this. So as an art student, the CCAC students used to go out to Lake Merritt and do their annual project there. I'm just wondering if we think of this as an opportunity for everybody to enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Tom Hines. Sorry.
Good evening, council, Madam Mayor. Once again, Dana's right. Once again, my concerns have always been for good architecture, good design. And I'm really disappointed with what I've seen so far. We first considered Sierra Point back in 2008. And we discussed the potentials down there, the possibilities, things like a carousel or a track for the RC cars, sound and wind features, amphitheater, et cetera. These are things we talked about 15 years ago. I saw nothing in, of that. So 15 years of nothing, and this was the best we could come up with? I'm sorry, guys. Once again, just like Prince Plaza, this is not recreation. It's circulation. You know, at the risk of hurting someone's feelings tonight, what I saw was amateurish. No new concepts. Some gravel, some grass. Spend a lot of money for gravel and grass. I don't get it. Having no activities down there is not going to draw people. Everything he talked about, we have here already in the comments. Socializing, calm, quiet space. You want to talk to your neighbors. No one's going to go down to the Sierra Point to talk to their neighbor. Come on. They want something to do. You know, if we put some serious effort into climate change, maybe there wouldn't be sea level rise in 30 years. You don't think about that. Put something into climate change reduction. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, was there a proposal for an amphitheater in one of your, okay, we're nodding yes. What? Okay. Yeah. So the next slip I have is Clark Conway.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council, trust me, I don't want to be here tonight. At all. But now I had some folks call me. I went to my first meeting of seeing this plan last Tuesday at the yacht club. And I said, what are you calling me for? I don't even know nothing about it, you know? Call the city council. And they say, well, we have, but they know nothing about it. So, you know, I mean, in, in a sense that I, I guess there's a few of you didn't know. Karen, thank you for saying what you said, because that, that verified what was being told to me. Anyway, sea level rise really kind of is, I think, the driving factor behind here. So I think this needs to be a multi-pronged approach. Two of them, or numerous of them are civil engineering issues. Okay. I'll start with the lagoon. The lagoon has Sierra Point Parkway, goes right parallel with the lagoon in 101. Once you go over the tube, you know, in the parking lot there, it literally drops down below 101. I have seen water currently at high tides lap over onto Sierra Point Parkway. Two foot sea level rise is going to isolate that. So you are going to end up isolating Sierra Point, just coming from Brisbane. Unless you come up with an engineering solution on how to regulate the water on the tubes. Because, you know, at six foot sea level rise, you're going to have a saltwater aquifer going down high speed rail. You know, so you got to find a way, because we got storm water coming off of the mountain in central Brisbane and, and also the Northeast Ridge, it goes into the lagoon. So we got to find a way of regulating water. That's one engineering solution, I think, that, that probably needs to work in parallel with this. The other one is the marina. Now, I want to address the marina because the marina is a neighborhood. Okay. Just like Central Brisbane, Northeast Ridge, it's a neighborhood. There's people out there, 50 plus people, that is their home. And then boat owners like myself go out there. We converse. It's, it literally is a neighborhood. Then you have, you know, the yacht club members, there's non-boat owners and boat owners. And trust me, they get together and it's a self-serve yacht club. And where the yacht club is built right now, yeah, we lease it for a dollar a year from the city. But the money that built the yacht club came from the membership. So the marina, as you all know, is an enterprise fund and it supports itself. So the money that's going in there, that is an asset to that neighborhood and to the rest of the community of Brisbane. So that needs to be an engineering solution to the marina portion. To me, it's easy to take this plan that's being presented tonight and really pick it apart. But I suggest, you know, you know, I don't want to come up with, you know, criticizing and stuff like that, but come up with solutions that maybe table it and then bring these other engineering solutions that you can get money for probably from BCDC or the state, because if it's affecting high speed rail, that money from that high speed rail abortion should go to, how are you going to fix the lagoon? And sea level rise, because otherwise it, it'll be nothing anyway. So that leg going from San Francisco to Santa Day is one of the stupidest things in California that we have going right now. And I'll leave it at that. But if we're going to trek across wetlands, think about the immobility impaired, such as myself, who have peripheral neuropathy that you're not going to walk, you got to have, you know, ramps and stuff like that. So I heard a consultant say about, oh, you can walk across the wetland. But I'm not sure if that's what he really meant. But anyway, it's an ADA issue. So got a lot of work here. Good luck.
Thank you. Next, we have Anthony Walker.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Great. Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to say a few words today in support of the Sierra Point Open Space and Parks Master Plan. And in support of continuation of the process. I had an opportunity to have a long conversation with the reps from CMG when they were here for Day in the Park and shared our family's thoughts and hopes for the site. And then participated in the online survey and have been tracking the process with interest ever since. And I've, I've got to say, I've been impressed and excited with what's been presented so far. You know, I think the proposals are all, you know, well considered and have a lot of great potential, but obviously they're not done yet. You know, and I've been really surprised and I must say disappointed to hear some real negativity about the project. You know, and some folks think we should scrap the whole project already. You know, this makes zero sense to me. You know, three potential plans have been presented in order to elicit conversation about character, identity and experience, but nothing is final yet. Right? So, you know, I feel like this is that conversation. And, you know, I'm already hearing a lot of great ideas from the community. That's exciting too. You know, input still being gathered and all the best ideas, you know, from the community should absolutely be a part of any final framework. You know, so this seems like normal discovery and exploration process to me, and I urge everyone to, you know, let it play out and contribute. You know, it's still a discussion, not some sort of mandate. You know, so if members of the community or the council have issues with any part of the plans, you know, let's all make our voices heard and work together to craft this into a thoughtful, multipurpose, shared open space that our whole community can be proud of. Those are my thoughts on the matter. Thank you.
Thank you. My next slip is from Michelle Salmon.
Michelle Salmon, Brisbane resident. I really liked a lot of what I saw in the concept plans. And then it was also really hard because I felt like the cart was put before the horse. And we do have to deal with sea level rise and already the changing face of the marina. Trees that were planted when we first started and they grew big and now they're gone because of saltwater intrusion and impacting their roots and sea level rise. So things will change. I think that it was very challenging to not take into account what's actually happening, happening on the docks and the marina and the disenfranchisement of those people in this process at the beginning. And I'm glad that's being remedied. I also really agree with Karen about this is what we contracted. How come we, the council wasn't informed along the way? It should not have come as a big surprise. And I, I think that's been really challenging. I have questions. I mean, my first thought was, hey, what are you going to do about the ground squirrels? It's the number one cause of cap failure. And what are you going to do about saltwater intrusion? And what are you going to do about a lot of the problems that we're facing? I feel like one of the driving things on this has been BDI's desire to overbuild the parcel. And every time I look at the renderings, I see these giant bricks, blocks, big, huge buildings there that will block views and change the wind pattern and change the traffic pattern and a lot of other things. And I don't know who in the world would have told the, the consultants that the 808 parking places were, was to entice developers. But we do have a lot of work and I appreciate the work that the council has done on this. And I really appreciate the work that the consultants have done on this. I mean, they've been very open to hearing things. And I, I got Amy's card and on it says landscape architecture. Doesn't say they're redesigning the docks on the marina. It doesn't say they're doing a lot of that. It says landscape architecture. And for landscape architecture, I think they did a really beautiful job. And I think the marina is a very vibrant place with a lot of activities that go on. The, you, you know, people walk, but there are numerous kinds of walkers. So thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Lisa Greenlee.
Hi, Lisa Greenlee, Brisbane resident and Park and Rec Commissioner. Yeah, I didn't plan on speaking tonight, but after the presentation, I just wanted to give some feedback because, you know, I just have some thoughts. First of all, there are a lot of opportunities for this exciting space. I think as a park and rec person, I look at that and I think of how much fun people could have out at the marina. They already do, but it is getting damaged by sea level change already. I mean, it's very swampy in a lot of the picnic areas. And there, there's just a disconnect between the shoreline and the areas that people would use. And that's already happening now and making it very unusable. So sea level rise will define the space. It's already defining the space. It's killing the trees. We know that. But I see it as a blank canvas and I liked seeing the different, you know, concepts. It's kind of like an idea page for, you know, a house renovation. It's, it's great ideas. It's a blank canvas. It's, it's great ideas. It's a blank canvas for art installation. And it's a, you know, I, I was interested in hearing that the Harbor Master Building is going to be so affected by sea level change that it has to move. Is that, is that true? Yeah, so what's that gonna look like? I mean, that's, that's major because a Harbor Master Building and the yacht club, you know, even though we love the yacht club the way it is and its kind of funkiness, but how is the Harbor Master Building moving gonna change the whole building structures that are going to go out there? I just think these are really interesting questions. But that's not what the consultant was really hired to do. I mean, he just opening it up for us as a city and as park and rec people to kind of think of new and more vibrant spaces out there. And I just, I'm pretty happy with the progress and I look forward to, to everybody in town having a say in what's gonna happen out there. So, thank you.
Thank you. The next slip is from Michael Barnes.
Evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Michael Barnes. I'm a Brisbane resident. The Sierra Point Park Master Plan RFP said that the park should meet the recreational needs of Sierra Point tenants and the public, including active recreation. This was to be done according to the RFP by meeting with multiple stakeholder groups. Until the Sierra Point Yacht Club demanded an unplanned meeting, the only stakeholders with input were city staff and city council and their committee appointees. These city hall stakeholders developed a Sierra Point Master Plan guiding principles from which active recreation was omitted. In fact, respite, an interval of rest, is the only recreation mentioned with the focus on sustainability, art, and a natural setting. The city should make an effort to engage with active recreation stakeholders like bicyclists and skaters. Some of these stakeholders work on Sierra Point. You should talk to the businesses out there. Bicycling is not just transportation, although the master plan focuses on this aspect of cycling. It is also recreation. The two thousand and twenty-two survey showed that forty-four percent of respondents ride bicycles for recreation on Sierra Point. And eighty percent of respondents use bicycling connections through Sierra Point, including the Bay Trail. A handful of bicycle skills features along the Bay Trail would be a great addition to bicycling recreation on Sierra Point. These features would attract parents and their kids. Kids who bike on Sierra Point today look for such features and use the south side slopes, including the landscape areas, to fly downhill. Even striders do this. I understand that the consultant has been directed not to include bicycling skills, features, or skate spots. The rationale being that Brisbane already has these features. Yet the Sierra Point Park Master Plan contains exercise stations, a volleyball court, and a playground duplicating existing recreation amenities. Please remove the Sierra Point restrictions on skate spots and bike skills features so that they are treated consistently with playgrounds, volleyball courts, and exercise stations. Reach out to bicycling stakeholders for their input. If you need help, I'm sure I could get bicyclists involved after having spent twenty-five years advocating for bicycles in Brisbane. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Paul Boskal.
Paul Boskal, Brisbane resident. Thank you, Mayor and Council. So a couple of things. One is, I know that the north end, the parking area in particular, is designated as an evacuation site for Brisbane. So I'm wondering, where at the Marina, is there gonna be areas that are gonna be set aside for evacuation sites? One of the other things I thought would be important out there is that it's my understanding the cost for this is gonna be like twenty to thirty million dollars. And I'm sure a portion of that cost is gonna be the replacement of the Harbor Masters Office. So I was thinking if we could create a floating Harbor Masters Office, kinda like in, at the same footprint as to where the Harbor Masters Office is existing, that would be a great idea. It's unconventional building, but its cost would probably be a lot less than conventional construction. I appreciate the consultant's efforts to create habitat for biodiversity. That's important. So I'm glad that they considered that. And one of the other things I was a little disappointed about because it's called the Sierra Point Open Space Master Plan, that the naturalized area that became naturalized wetlands closer to one oh one, it's the area that is a habitat, wasn't considered in this. So doesn't seem like it's too late. It's not like anything would have to be done there. With the exception of maybe creating an area that people wouldn't go out to and just have some a platform or something that people can view habitat, because there's a lot of habitat out there, birds and others, such things going on. And I guess that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Dylan Garrett.
I, I lived in, on my boat in the Marina for about five years. Been Commodore of the Yacht Club, now I'm past Commodore of Sierra Point Yacht Club. I feel like I'm a entwined member of the Marina Yacht Club. And so I kinda wanted to come up here and share why we have the frustration that we do, not necessarily with the, the people that are making the plan, but more maybe with the city council. Just because when we, when I first moved out there, it was dirt. It was dirt and then we had our boats at the end. We had the people that flew their planes. We had security back then to walk the docks at night. That's gone away. We had a lot more people, dock staff, we had like three people that worked on the docks that, you know, took care of the maintenance of the docks. That's been reduced down to one. Then we had to dredge the Marina and we realized that there was no money for that and the city had to take out a loan. This is all oral history, so I'm just going through it right now. And so our slip fees had to be raised to pay off that loan. And our docks continue to go into disrepair. They're cracking up. There's no lights on the docks. You know, now we have live boards, so we take care of each other. It's a community out there. We have to take care of each other. We don't have any security during nighttime. During the storms, when there's not people, not dock or hired maintenance people there, we prevent boats from sinking and wrap up people's sails. So this whole plan is great. I mean, thank you for finally paying attention to us out there. I mean, this is fabulous. I mean, this is something that I think all of us at the Marina really are behind and really would be behind and are looking forward to. It's exciting that there's stuff happening in the Marina that we're being put on the map out there. That's great. It's just, I think there's, as Michelle said, the cart before the horse kinda thing happening and I feel like there needs to be more of a holistic approach to this where the Marina is taken into account as well as their plan. And so that's what I just wanted to say is that us in the Marina are not against this plan. It's just maybe include the people that have been down there for decades. You know, include where they live into the plan a little bit more. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Ron Davis.
I'll be short because most of what I wanted to say has been said. I'd just like to say that if it's really sea rise that we're concerned, conserve with, and that's why we're doing all this, that why aren't we taking the approach of working from the farthest point out in the seawall? The Marina itself, luckily boats float, so what holds that whole Marina together should be looked at as a holistic approach and then work the way back. I think when, when you get, I think we've, a lot of boaters felt that there was, this all happened out of nowhere and, and didn't, weren't informed about it or weren't included really in the process up to this point was disconcerting. So when people see drawings, in most people's opinion, that looks like something that's about to happen. And so don't, don't quite understand, you know, most people don't quite understand where that, where that goes. When you move parking for, there's, there's quite a few elderly people out there. When you move parking back three parking spots away and then say we're gonna build all this stuff to attract more people and there's all these buildings being built that aren't occupied by tenants, by workers yet. It's, I think, a recipe for just, just congestion and overdevelopment. And that I think that for us, one of the main things is to be convenient, have the Marina taken care of and for future generations to have that Marina shine as an example of a really, really nice Marina, which it is. We go on cruise outs, we go to a lot of different Marinas. Our Marina is really nice. Could use some, 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 some work on it, but we have a great, a great thing out there that should be considered in the plan at the basis of it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Mitch Bull.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. Mitch Bull, Economic Development Director. I'm just here to, to tickle your brain cells a little bit. In the years that we've talked about Sierra Point, I've been on Sierra Point since eighty-nine, working first out there when there were only three buildings. And the Marina was a shining star then and it still is, although it does need some TLC. One of the things we need to think about, if we're future-proofing Sierra Point against sea level rise and everything else, we've talked over the years, and I think all of you have been in the meetings, about transportation mitigation on Sierra Point. So I just don't want you to forget about the possibility of water taxis service in the future. And I mean, even the far-fetched things like, like the hovercraft people that came and talked to us. I just don't want that to get lost in the whole overview planning. Thank you.
Forgot about that. Thanks, Mitch.
Next speaker is Nancy Loxamana. Nancy, go ahead.
Can you hear me now?
Barely.
Okay, I'll try to speak loud. I, I like that word, future-proofing there because I think that's really important. And I think we all are in agreement that sea level rise is probably the number one barometer we have to take care of. And I do think we have to consider all the public land, even if it wasn't in the original contract. I mean, for fifteen years ago, that was my trail, that was my recreation with my six-year-old son. And we must have done that Bay Trail all the way to the other side of South San Francisco at least five to six hundred times over those, those years. So that is the most important thing to me is dealing with the sea level rise and preserving the Bay Trail. I do appreciate that this is, like Lisa said, it, it should be an open, open, sort of like canvas to decide what we wanna do, but I'm not sure everything has to be done right away. Let's work on the sea level rise, what needs to be done, what needs to appease to get the Marina a little bit more updated and also deal with, I think Sierra Point is transit poor, so there's nothing there that really is encouraging people to take transit. So I think those are the issues we should deal with first. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That includes, that concludes the amount of slips I have in hands that were raised. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item at this time? Oh, I have a hand raised from England.
Hello, Mayor. I have correspondence from Linda Detmer.
Okay.
Says this needs to go back to the drawing board within the boundaries of the original. The boat owners have been left out and parking and circulation are very important. It is far beyond the original ideas. The tenants are the most important part of this plan as it houses many residents. The idea of leaning to nature is beautiful, however ignores much of the quiet beauty that is presently enjoyed.
Okay. Is Nancy's hand just still raised or is she wishing to say something else? Okay, hands down. Oh, hands up. Nancy, are you wishing to make another comment? No. Okay. Is there anyone else wishing to make a comment at this time? Okay. We will now move on to council discussion. I, I have just a question for staff really quick. So is the reason why the Marina and addressing sea level rise there and maintenance issues and infrastructure and that sort of thing, is that because, and I'm assuming the answer to this is yes, but I don't know that the public necessarily knows this, is that the money that's funding this consultant is coming from a specific fund for open space and parks at the Marina, which Health Peak and whoever is paid into that fund, those funds are specifically supposed to be earmarked for the planning of a park and that's why the scope of work for this does not include infrastructure like the Marina?
Yeah, I, I couldn't put it better. The only thing I would add is that if we want to do an infrastructure study on the Marina, that's really a different consultant, a different skill set, you know, civil engineer. Public Works Director can speak to that. The council wishes to have more detail on that.
And we're able to afford this at this time, to hire a consultant to do that because there's two million dollars essentially in a fund specifically earmarked for this?
Correct.
Right. Okay, and if we wanted to fund a study to, let's say, look at infrastructure and sea level rise at the Marina, we would need to figure out a way to come up with a budget for that. Because at present, it seems like our budget is rather tight.
Yeah, I mean, we would have to do a similar process where you would develop a scope of work, put out a request for proposal and identify the funding for it. We do have a Marina Enterprise Fund. Presumably that's where the money would come from. What the kind of order of magnitude that we're talking about in terms of expenditure, I know, I, I don't know. I don't know if Randy wants to venture a guess at that at this point or, or not. No, thank you. It would really be a really bad swag.
So I know that, so I know that when we've had, you and I have had conversations, we've talked about, you know, having a, a master plan helps get grants from the state and local agencies to address sea level rise or the federal government. Do you think that it's possible, like, are they issuing grant funds to plan for how we would, like, if we wanted to focus on the Marina specifically? Is there a way that we could get some sort of federal funding? Is that available at this time to address sea level rise yet?
You, you know, with, with regards to the Marina, I don't, I don't know. I do know that, you know, I, I've actually, we've got a meeting coming up with the Executive Director of One Shoreline, which is the county group that's charged with dealing with issues of stormwater projects and sea level rise about potential grant opportunities. I think he made a presentation, if I'm correct, Karen, to the C KAG at some point, and then we followed up.
They did, they did.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, with all of the agencies studying sea level rise in San Mateo County, it's very interesting, the lack of attention that's being paid to the part of one oh one going right through Brisbane. We are going to be underwater very soon and rather than addressing how to fix one oh one, and if one oh one goes underwater, Frontage Road is gone, my friends. They're actually just talking about rerouting the traffic out of San Francisco on two eighty. So I don't know what the impetus is there, but maybe you can find out, Clay.
Yeah, in, in any case, I appreciate your, your efforts in this. He had reached out to me about getting together and talking about some potential grant funding to look at sea level rises in this part of the county. Whether that would include a Marina or not, I don't know. I mean, that's, you know, there's not that many, that, the normal projects are shorelines and, and, you know, residential and commercial properties, so.
Maybe I can take that back to C KAG.
So, so when I was on C KAG, most of the funding and concern were on the infrastructure protection and that was including wastewater treatment plants. were on the infrastructure protection, and that was including wastewater treatment plants and other facilities that were of regional importance, were usually in low-lying areas and would change the life as we know it if they stopped functioning. I, I don't know if they would consider a marina part of that infrastructure protection.
Okay. Councilmember Mackin, would you like to make some comments?
Okay. I heard comments about negativity, so I'm gonna start with, some people will call negative, but I call realistic. First of all, um, I'm going to address some comments made by my colleague, Councilmember Cunningham. I too was in the dark about this project, and I think we have a problem when change of scope on what I voted for suddenly expands exponentially. I understand the reasons, but I think that's such a significant change. The rest of the council deserve to hear about that. That, that's alarming. It, it's not just a little change, it grew measurably. It can be a good thing, it could be a bad thing, but we need to talk about it. And my concern there is not this project. I'm glad this happened. I'm very glad this happened, because we have some big development projects. And if this happened on the quarry or the baylands, I'd be really upset. We cannot leave the whole council in the dark. We need to, i- i- if any changes happen, it needs to come back. And one of the reasons it comes back is it also informs the public, not just us. The public didn't know about those changes. But as former mayor, former council member Conway said, it's really hard when you're on the council and people are asking you questions about the project and you say, I've never seen it. That's not okay. So we need to, all five of us, make a commitment, whatever subcommittees we are on, we keep each other informed. If something changes, we bring it back to the group. So please, I would ask for that tonight. As far as the mention of positivity, negativity, there are so many speculations, and there are so many subjective views. I appreciate all of your views on what you like, what you hate, what one person loves, another person hates. Is this park supposed to be a quiet place, as so many respondents in a survey said? Is the survey accurate? I could call up all my friends that I want to push the survey a certain direction, and it'll make the survey look like that's what everybody wants. Is that really true? And how you ask the questions in a survey can make a big difference in the results. So I probably would ask also that we go back to square one, because we're gonna deal with this with the quarry. We're gonna deal with it with the baylands, that we develop some sort of an idea, a process of how we approach this. And, and I heard one member of the yacht club say, all you needed to do was go out on the, the trail there with a clipboard and ask people questions. Why are you here? How often do you come? What do you like about being here? Not ask them any leading questions like, do you want barbecues out here? Just say, what do you like out here? What don't you like? What isn't here that you might want to see? Solicit that input, not feed them an input. So that's my take on it. Um, beyond that, because of all the disparate ideas here, I don't think we've really determined what we want out there. That's my impression. We've got bicyclists who want maybe a pump track or bicycle features. We have people who want amphitheaters and civic spaces. We have other people who say, I don't want any of that. I want it to be quiet. I just want it to be natural. Maybe there's a space for everybody, but I have one other big concern. This is one park. We may have a gigantic park on the baylands. Do we want to duplicate things? And that's been brought up tonight as well. Duplication of services. We're a small city. Can we afford to do that? Do we really want to do that? So if we put bicycle features on the Crocker Trail, do we need the same thing on the marina? Don't we want each of these to have a different character, maybe? It doesn't mean you can't have a bike trail, doesn't mean you can't have a place for kids to play, but do we want to duplicate everything? That doesn't make sense to me. So I would like a little better outreach. I think the outreach could have been done better. I didn't see it go through what I expected according to what I approved last July, because the yacht club and the boaters were on the list of who was supposed to be contacted. So I think we need a way more thorough vetting process. As far as sea level rise, I don't know how we can just say, let's do a plan and either we build it, if we get some funding, or we build parts, and then maybe in twenty years we go, wow, that was a bad idea, because we didn't really think this through. And now we've got a huge infrastructure problem. You can't get down Sierra Point Parkway anymore because it's flooding all the time, and we don't have money to do that, and where's that gonna come from? And we're gonna put wetlands around the marina, but we have riprap, and so what happens when the boats go up to wherever the docks are? Are, are they gonna get torn out like the Titanic on riprap? I just don't think we can isolate the park and isolate the marina and sea level rise. I would like to see us all come back with another meeting and decide how we approach this whole issue, because they do overlap, and that's my take on it. I, I don't see how you can plan for what might happen in thirty years and, and not pay attention to what's going on with the marina or the roads leading out there. Or are we gonna have, as, as Mitch said, ferry service where Sierra Point's an island because the road floods all the time? We've gotta think this through comprehensively. So that's my idea. Thank you for listening to me. I appreciated all of you took your time and everyone at home to give us your comments. Thank you very much.
Anyone else like to go next?
Sure, and I, I have some questions of staff first, and, and then, um, you know, I, 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 I would like to, like, have discussion amongst ourselves, you know, rather than say just giving a statement and, you know, kind of limited at that. Because I mean, I really want to know, like, like, how you're feeling about it and i- i- you know, and be able to have that back and forth and, and whatever, you know, comments you might have, Madison, Terry and Karen. I think that, that then gives us a, a, a greater breadth of understanding where everyone's coming from and helping us to move forward. So, um, you know, there was a comment made about like active recreation, and there were some restrictions there. I, I wasn't aware of any restrictions. Are, I mean, are there restrictions to that? I mean, I think the idea is just to gather input from the community and then just stick it into, you know, what, what the consultant is, is, is putting together.
I am not aware of any restrictions. I don't think anything's off the table at this point, right? And we were in the information collecting phase.
Okay, all right. No, no, that, that, that's good. And then, um, let's see. You know, I, I've, I've gotten some questions from the community in regards to evacuation site. This Sierra Point is, is one of those locations. But I, I mean, I would think like the, the entire Sierra Point, including private property, i- if needed, would be part of an evacuation site. Is it? It, we would just do what we needed to do to make, uh, that place safe and secure for folks that might be suffering from some kind of disaster.
Sir, the residential assembly point that was identified jointly by the City's Office of Emergency Services and North County Fire Authority is the parking lot outside the Sierra Point Yacht Club.
Okay.
That's the identified area.
That's the identified area. So that's, that footprint's not very big then, correct?
Depends how you define big, I guess, sir.
Oh, okay. Well, maybe, what, what do you, like, how many parking spots or, or is that particular footprint that?
Down there, it, it's, if you take it all the way down the shoreline, it's inaccessible hundred.
Okay, okay. So that, that's kind of the, what's needed.
We think, you know, when we've had the, the limited experience here we've had with fire, you don't really get that many people going out there. Because normally, when you have a residential assembly point, the point of it is people who don't have any place else to go. So when we opened Mission Blue Center, and for a lot of people, surprisingly, they just get in their cars and they go to a friend's house. Uh, those that have memes, go check in at a hotel. So we really don't get that many people. It's on the worry. It's, I'm trying to think back, it was either in oh six or oh eight where we had the last really big fire on the mountain, and we had to open Mission Blue Center. We didn't have two dozen people there. People found a place to go.
Got it. Okay, all right. And then, um, you know, Randy, you know, Clay suggested that we could ask you some questions about the marina, so I, and I know that maybe.
That's okay, sir, sure.
No one, you know, yeah, there's kind of like this, like, there's the land.
Yep.
Portion which we've, that's, we've hired, uh, CMG to do the consulting for. Um, but then there's the marina part, and so, so kind of walk us back a little bit. I know the, the one boater gave, you know, pretty, pretty good, you know, history of some of the things that were going on. Um, but like with the dredging and the, the dock repair, um, that was about ten years ago and kind of like, I think, or so.
I- it's within less than that, right? I mean, when the dredging happened, and then shortly after the dredging happened, we staffed it. Wh- when I took over that area, we were just coming into the point where we had three part-time employees that were working there. And so at that point in time, we transitioned it to two full-time employees, because we had a couple of retirements and, and people leaving. And we just thought that was the wiser thing to do. Then we did the dredging, and then we realized that we had a lot of work that needed to be on the docks, because they were tilting, the fingers were tilting and out of shape. So we temporarily put a third person down there. We put a team leader down there to provide assistance, because we did most of that manual work ourselves. And then after that work was completed, we put that team leader, we brought that person back on to, uh, the Public Works O and M team out on the buildings and ground side of the house.
Got it, got it. And, um, and I, I would just assume being out on the water that that's just something that you're gonna have to repair fairly consistently.
The billets, the floating concrete billets in particular, yeah, they tend to, they tend to fray away at the top. And, and the reality for the boaters that are here, sea level, they know that everything rusts at sea level, including stainless steel. It's just a matter of, it requires ongoing maintenance.
Got it, got it. And, and when the, you know, the, the city was, you know, evaluating that, was, was was that part of the infrastructure subcommittee, or was it a special ad hoc committee that, that looked at these marina needs and, and then working with staff then made, uh, recommendations to the full council?
No, sir, I believe that was self-identified by staff.
Self-identified by staff. Okay, okay. Um, all right. Um, you know, some of the needs that have been addressed tonight, um, you know, I say in regards to dredging or some of the dock repairs, um, are those things that are urgently needed to be taken care of, or we still have time, um, before we're gonna have to do that work again?
Well, the dredging is in most places, except that, a, a couple of the approach channelers get a couple of spots that we're starting to watch and after we're starting to see some sedimentation on it, and a couple of the, the, the channel markers. So we've been monitoring that, and we're trying to get a handle to see if we have to go in and just do a wee bit. But throughout most of the marina, it's still pretty good. It, it, it's still, we've got years, we go through on a three-year basis, and we do a bathymetric survey to determine where we are to see how far along we go. Uh, a- as far as some of the other maintenance, sure, I mean, I, I know that there, there are spots on the docks where some of the concrete is spalled off. There's, unfortunately, there's not a really good way to repair that. There's not a lot of options that take it, so we go in and we patch it as we go to get. But, but beyond that, I mean, you've heard, I think the majority of the speakers that talked about the marina recognize the fact that we have a pretty decent marina out there. I mean, considering the fact that we don't have a lot of retail amenities, um, we're in pretty good shape. We have one of the highest occupancy rates that's out there in the Bay Area, except for perhaps the one adjacent, uh, to the Giants Ballpark. So it's, it seems like folks want to be here.
Okay, all right. And then, and then so the, the, the boating community, they, you know, they, they pay for their slips, and the money, you know, goes into the marina fund, which then, um, goes to pay for various things. And I guess there's a certain amount of money that's, that's in reserves? That's like building up for then's potential.
There, there is an enterprise fund, there is an enterprise fund, and I think, uh, the Finance Director provided that to the City Manager earlier today. It's, you know, we don't, during the year, we don't make a, a profit on that. We don't make a huge profit on that. We do have excess funds at the end of every year, but as you know, just like anybody would do, any responsible person would do with their own personal finances, you put a little money aside every year, because you know things are gonna come up, you know big things are gonna come up.
Okay, all right, all right. Thank, thank you for that, Randy.
I've had a request for a five-minute break.
Yeah, that'd be nice.
So, um, I know you guys are all waiting to hear what we end up deciding, so we'll make sure we keep it to, to five minutes as best as possible, and I hope you will stick around. So we will return at nine forty. So, um. It's getting late. We still have items on our agenda. I think this is gonna be a very lengthy discussion. So I actually would like staff, based on. Some of the discussion we've had already and what you've heard from the public, do you have some suggestions of how we might proceed on this? Instead of trying to work it all out this evening, what would you suggest?
So based on the conversation you've had um so far, I think there's three kind of subject matter areas that I'm hearing. One would be for staff to come back with um uh what it would take uh in terms of kind of a proposal to do. Like a fifteen percent drawing, understanding of the infrastructure with regards to the 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 Marina sea level rise issues. Um, maintenance, et cetera. The second would be the public participation plan in terms of the park planning piece of this. Um, and um kind of review that, get counsel, um, comment on that. And then the third is um maybe mapping out a little bit in terms of the subcommittees. And how we bring information back to the council. We've been, you know, I think our history has been we've been somewhat informal in that process. And so, you know, maybe there's a more of a of a written formality that we might want to do. That's just. I'm just kind of going off the top of my head tonight. There's probably different thoughts in terms of how you do that. So those. I think we can bring something back and then kind of set the stage for council um conversation. Um, in terms of timing, um, we we won't have a full council on the sixteenth, um, the sixth. Um, we currently have the uh residential parking permit um program. Um, staff will give you an update from Complete Streets Committee. That potentially could draw a crowd. Um, so it may be that you want to push this off to the uh April um twentieth meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I I personally don't see any harm in um tabling it for a few weeks. Obviously. This is a twenty fifty type of projection, so it's not like it's that urgent. Um, I think it might give us all some time to digest. And um, I don't, how does the council feel about all of those options? I think would be important to have a discussion about all of those options. Or if you like only some of those options, or if there are other options. You'd like to move forward with, but I don't think tonight's the night to to crank all of this out. I think. That this can be worked out at the subcommittee with staff and then we can come when it's earlier in the evening and really get into this, so.
Sounds good to me. I just have one comment, if I may please. Um, one of the things that I think is missing in a lot of. Things that are brought forward to the council, not from you guys, but from from everybody, is I see a lot of exclusivity. And I think we need to make sure it is inclusivity. Every time I look at a program or parking or this or that, my question always is, who are we building for? And what I see time and time again is that we are building for young, able bodied people. And we are missing out on the rest of society. I've brought this comment. When we say, hey, we can build these houses, and if they're within half a mile of public transportation, we don't need parking. And I'm like, who are we building for? We're building for able bodied young people who can walk that half mile. What about the people who? The dad that's got one leg and three kids coming home in the middle of the night, and he's got kids going to different schools and he's on public transportation. He's gonna hobble up the street in the middle of the night with his bag of groceries, three kids in the cold and the rain. So I think that's one really important thing that we need. In this mix that's not here, like so many other projects that I see. That's my comment. Thank you.
And I think it it also is important to note that at the Marina, many of the live boards are are seniors because it is such an affordable. Option. So um, I'm very familiar with that community. And that definitely is part of, a big part of the mix.
Yep.
Um, anyway, I don't want to digress too much. Did you want to say something?
No, I I think that. I would not want to stop the outreach that the consultant is doing at this point. I think he's, they should can, I would hope that they can continue with their outreach. Um, while we are figuring out what we want to do with that information. But I would hate to see him, them have to stop their work completely while we discuss the process. Because their report is just ideas for us. We're not obligated to do anything that they've. Proposed, projected, or um put on a piece of paper. Um, and so I would hate to see them stop their outreach at this point. While we gather our thoughts together.
There was a comment from Councilmember Mackin about the outreach specifically. Um, going onsite with clipboards and having um discussions with. People who are using the area. I don't know if that a specific type of outreach is planned. I know there was a day that was planned. At the Marina, um, I think it was like the weekend of the February twenty fifth. And um. So. It it may not be that we're all in alignment on um on. The planned outreach going forward.
Well, are we? Are we being asked? Or are we making a decision to stop the process cold turkey right now? And I I'm looking at staff for that.
Uh, you know, I I hear what you're saying, Terry, and you know, I mean, what maybe what we could do is is, we do have an an outreach plan. Um, and the the uh suggestion from Councilmember Mackin, I think is a really good one, and I think it's actually one of the the days that the uh. Consultant was planning on on doing. We're, we were gonna do something like that last Saturday, and I think probably good that we didn't do it because it was extremely cold. So um, uh, what maybe what we can do is is uh review the uh the outreach plan with the subcommittee.
Yes.
And um, and then before we uh move forward and hopefully we can maybe arrange a meeting next week and. And kind of um get everybody comfortable with that and then report that back to the council and move forward with that.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to make sure that the councils and the public knows that the outreach and the process is going to. Continue. We're not gonna just stop at cold turkey. I just wanted to make sure that. Everyone's aware of that.
Yeah, yeah, I know. I totally agree with that. And I I really like the way that you you put it together, Terry. I mean, there's been a lot of input so far, right? And we want to make sure that that we honor that. Uh, but there's still so much work that we need to do. And I think, I I think. I think, you know, there's a common theme from all of us is that we need more outreach. We need to hear more input from the entire community. And, you know, in order to make the best decision in the end. And, yeah, we're not there yet. Um, but, yeah, they they've done all, you know, some great work so far. And it, yeah. I I I'm glad that we're, we're gonna move forward with continuing that.
This item is just an informational. Um, update. And so I don't think we need to vote. I think that staff's aware of the concerns that everyone has. The public, the council, everyone.
Yeah, I think when the, when it's not like historically freezing temperatures. Is probably a better time to do outreach um at, like our coldest place in town. Naturally, so we might get better, you know, better feedback. Also, I know that like a lot of people walk that area in the morning, first thing in the morning. Um, so maybe like you guys could look at the schedule, going out there. Earlier in the morning and then maybe going out there later in the afternoon and seeing different, if there's a change in um. How people are using the space or the feedback that you're getting in the morning and maybe. You know, people exercising before work and in the afternoon might be like young families burning off that steam before bedtime or, you know, who knows what you'll discover. I think that this process really is gonna feel like a lot like Parkside, right? You have these three plans that come forward and you may hate them all. You may like certain bits and pieces. And so, you know, what we did as a council during that time is there was no one shining star of a plan. There was no plan that we saw that we were all like, oh, that's the one, right? We got so much feedback and what we did is we took all of those elements and we added new things in that we heard from the community. And we made a plan that worked. And I think that we're all really proud of. So I see this process being very similar. Um, and I think to the comment that you made earlier, some people want like um civic spaces and some people want very quiet spaces and some people want. Super active spaces. And I think that that really happens no matter what the project is. You could have a housing project and people are really, really wanting very small, very dense units. Because we have this responsibility to provide, you know, our fair share of housing. And then you have people who. Just want one story or two stories max and units that are two to three bedrooms to prioritize families. No matter what the project is, you're gonna get people all across the gamut. They're gonna say completely opposite things of what they want. And that's, I think, what makes this process so special, right? Because we all have our own ideas. Um, and we'll work with the consultant to help synthesize those things together so we can. Pick out what are the common themes and which of those common things, themes actually make sense for the space based on who we're designing for and build something together. This process is gonna take time. It's not, we don't have funding earmarked. This isn't something that's happening tomorrow. Um, and so I hope that that's something that is cleared up this evening because I know a lot of people. Are worried that how do you have money for twenty, thirty, forty, fifty million dollar park, but you don't have money to fix the Marina? This is not, this is not what's happening. We're planning for the future and it sounds like there are obviously other areas that we need to plan for as well around this space. So if everyone's amenable, we can direct staff to work on those three aspects and bring it back to us in a few months. Is everyone okay with that?
Sounds good to me.
We don't need a motion, right? We're just general direction. Okay. Thank you all for coming. Um. If you want to leave now, you won't hurt my feelings. But if you'd like to stick around, uh, we will now move on to item H, which is consider Ample Batteries' proposed temporary lease on city owned parking spaces.
Uh, yes, thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. Uh, this matter was uh heard by the council in November of last year, proposal by um. Ample Battery to temporarily lease a limited number of city owned parking spaces at the B of A site and um Sierra Point to install. E V battery charging stations. Uh, based on the comments that came up at the last discussion. Um, there were several amendments made to the proposed lease agreement, which is attached to the staff report. Um, so primarily changes related to establishing a fixed payment. Based on the area and not based on the number of chargers, uh, charging stations installed. Um, agreement further revised to specify hours of operation is eight AM to eight PM. Uh explicitly define the operator's maintenance obligations and clarify that ancillary improvements such as lighting and fencing would be as uh subject to city review and approval. Um, to ensure any safety or um other concerns are addressed. Uh, additionally, um, the police department did have the opportunity to visit another site. Uh, that's operating in San Jose and their report is attached to the staff report as well. Uh, Commander Garcia was present and he's here tonight. Um, summary, they found the site to be well maintained and managed and that the noise levels from the measurements were not significant uh for the operation. So. With that, we're recommending the city council authorize the city manager to execute the attached lease agreement. That concludes my comments.
This is an item that we've discussed previously, but um, does anyone have any new questions? Councilmember Mackin?
Yes, thank you. I do have a question. Um. On the lease agreement, John, if you could answer, under tenants' use of property. It lists up to three electric battery swapping stations. On each of the premises. The previous time we saw this, there were two at OCR, Old County Road. And there were three at the Marina. Is this a typo or is it now potentially three and three?
Um, I would call that a typo because I'm looking at the map that's attached, Exhibit A. And the space at Old County Road would only accommodate two stations. So, um, you know, up to three, but they would not be able to accomplish three at the old county site.
Is a representative from Ample here on this call?
Uh, he's not present. He was supposed to be available via phone. I don't know if he is or not.
Oh, I think this is Eric.
He's on Zoom.
Okay, um, if you don't, if council doesn't mind, I'd love to make sure that Eric, that's his understanding as well. That it would be two spaces per site, not three, so we make sure that there's.
Uh, yes. Hi, council. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, I I I believe that is a typo. Um, our intention was to do up to two at the OCR site and through up to three at the Marina. and through up to three at the Marina site.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I have a couple other.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Eric.
The other question, um, actually, a request on the same lease agreement, item E, light from the operation shall be the minimum necessary for security purposes. Can we put in downward facing? Just because we've run into that before, unless we have specificity. We're we're not being clear in our expectations.
That's good.
Um, also, Exhibit A. There are other parking lots on the property. Will the tenant have use of the other parking lots? I don't see anything about that. And and the reason I'm asking this is because if it just happens, there's certain peak hours of the day. If there are vehicles that come and they're kind of massing and looking for a place to wait for their turn, are they going to be able to use the other parking lots or are they being told just to queue up in the driveway? I think we need to make that very clear.
As I understood from the applicant's previous presentation, they wouldn't have queuing. But certainly if that's something the council wants to um specify in this lease agreement, I'm sure we can do that. I mean, the space they're entitled to is is as shown on these exhibits. Um, if someone's parked in a public parking lot at Sierra Point, um, you know, what would be sort of the enforcement ability to deal with that um might be somewhat challenging. But but certainly if that's your intent, to only limit to that space, we can certainly uh word it as such.
I I'm sorry, I'm actually just mostly referencing Old County. Because there may be a point, we we wanna utilize the other spaces for something else. So I I was just concerned about if vehicles go in the other areas. If if we can just make it clear, the intent is where the proposed meter locations are and not the back parking lot. Thank you.
Sure.
No. Great, great comments. Um. No, anyone else? Do I have a with the amendment suggested by Councilmember Mackin? Do I have a motion?
I will make that motion with the amendments, may I, um, Councilmember Mackin.
Madam Mayor, there might be some public comment.
Oh, my gosh, getting too late. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak on this side? No, okay. I don't feel as bad then. Um, okay, so let's state the, let's state the motion for to make Tom happy.
I will make a motion to approve Amples, excuse me, I'm losing my voice.
You want me to say it? Amples temporary lease
Thank you.
of city-owned parking spaces with Councilmember Mackin's amendments.
I'll second that.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Lance.
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
And Mayor Davis.
Aye. We'll move on to item I, which is a second reading to consider S P C R O, Sierra Point Commercial District zoning text amendment twenty twenty-two R Z four. Zoning text amendment to Title seventeen, Chapter seventeen point eighteen of the Brisbane Municipal Code B M C to update existing research and development use provisions and performance standards and finding that this project is exempt from environmental review under CECL guidelines, section one five one eight three A. Uh, do I have a staff report?
Um, yes, as you indicated, Madam Mayor, this item was introduced at the last council meeting. Um, staff was directed to do more outreach to both owners and tenants out at Sierra Point to understand, to make sure they understood these provisions and get feedback. Um, the Economic Development Director Mitch Bull undertook that. He's here tonight. He can report on whatever uh input he received from those parties.
Okay.
I'm the mayor and council. Mitch Bull, Economic Development Director. Uh, based on staff's recommendations, I called the owners of the properties at Sierra Point that have biotech, meaning Health Peak, Phase Three. Uh, I also called Ultragenics, Sangamo, uh, Anexon, Bristol Myers. And the, no one had any concerns. They they know what the intent is. Uh, the president of uh Phase Three, who's building the new properties out there and has taken over the other ones, said he doesn't see this as a problem, as most of the people that they are leasing to would would not use this type of R and D. So I had no negative feedback on this at all.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
No.
Nope.
Okay.
Um, is there? Excuse me.
Yeah.
Just one thing. I I did wanna point out because this came up before, that the way this is now written, um, anything exceeding biosafety level three. There were concerns from the public about biosafety four, so it is written, thank you very much for the rewording, anything exceeding biosafety level three comes back to the council. Thank you for that.
Okay. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak on this item? Michelle Salmon?
I'm sorry, in interest of transparency, can you tell me what exactly the changes that you're making? I didn't read the staff report this time, I'm sorry.
This is the item we discussed last meeting, uh, or the meeting before regarding animal testing, changing the requirements to prohibit bunny rabbits and all other um animals that aren't amphibians, reptiles, insects, invertebrates.
Rodents.
Uh, rodents, et cetera.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a first and a second to receive the second reading and adopt the ordinance amending Chapter seventeen point eighteen of the Brisbane Municipal Code?
So moved.
I'll second.
I'm gonna call the vote, but I'm just gonna say one thing. I um voted against this item last time it came before us because I felt that I didn't hear from anyone from our biotech community and that really concerned me. Um, but now that we have made an effort to specifically contact and there is support from our existing biotech community, I'm happy to support the changes to this ordinance.
Yeah, I'd like to just make some other comment, you know, uh, originally I thought that okay, this decision should be made by the biotech community, the scientists in regards to what type of testing that they need in order to um, you know, bring some of these these drugs to market. The other was the economic issue, you know, trying to make sure that we stay competitive in this this, you know, part of the economy. Um, but yeah, you know, if 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 the industry says they don't have an issue with it, that they can do what they need to do in order to put uh the drugs out onto the market that um, will be safe and that they can bring companies to Sierra Point. You know, hopefully eventually the Baylands, uh, without, uh, you know, any issues because of changes in the ordinance, then I can support it as well.
Great. So with that.
So I I I have a question because of a comment that uh Councilmember Lance brought up. Will this same ordinance apply to the Baylands or would that need to be under a separate ordinance?
That would be put into the Bayland specific plan. It would have to be adopted as part of that.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, okay, so it would be separate then. Okay, sorry.
Okay, is uh city clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Cunningham. Aye. Councilmember Lance.
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
And Mayor Davis.
Aye. Okay. We'll now move on to staff reports, item J.
Okay, I will be quick. There's four items. Um, wanted to update you on, uh, last evening, the Complete Streets Safety Committee met to discuss their work regarding guidelines for proposed residential permit parking program for Central Brisbane. Uh, staff will make a presentation to the city council at your April sixth meeting with regards to um what they're uh recommending. The uh draft Bayland specific plan prepared by the property owner, Baylands Development, Inc., has been submitted to the city of Brisbane and will be made available uh tomorrow on the city's website and shared in the blast in a hard copy format will be both at City Hall and the Brisbane Library. Uh, note that this plan is the applicant's proposal and the community will have an opportunity to weigh in on the plan and related environmental impact report through a public review process. Um, coming up this Saturday, the Parks and Recreation Staff and will be conducting a retreat with the Parks and Recreation Commission, which they will share a report out at their commission meeting next Wednesday, March eighth at six thirty. And then finally, the Idea Committee, Parks Recreation and the Library invite the community out to the community park next Wednesday, um, the eighth at three thirty to welcome the beginning of spring with Hindu festival colors holy.
Oh, that sounds fun. Okay, um, we'll move to item K, update on committee recruitment.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, we received um six applications for the Public Art Selection Committee and three applications for the Idea Committee. And so we would need about between a one hour thirty minute to a two hour meeting to schedule interviews.
Would that need to be in person in, would that be in-person interviews?
Um.
Or could they be Zoom?
Um, they could be hybrid.
I think they could be, I think the council.
Yes, I'm sorry. The applicant applicants can be um in Zoom. But this also counts as an in-person meeting for councilmembers.
Did Tom wanna say something? Or was that a voice from God?
No, there isn't.
The the applicants can be via video and I will, I'm in, I actually need to check. Aren't the, the interviews are not convened with an agenda? Interviews are just.
It's posted as a special meeting.
As a special meeting, not a workshop.
City council, correct.
Okay, if it's supposed to be a special meeting, I bow to Ingrid Padilla, sorry. So yes, you do need to be in person unless you uh qualify for inception.
Thank you. So are you proposing some dates then?
Um, I can do a poll for for staff, I mean, for uh council members to do.
Okay.
That's okay.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll move on to item L, countywide assignments and subcommittee reports. Um, city manager has a request at this time for us to consider.
Um, yeah, I, the uh, one of the um meetings was the liaison's meeting with the OSEC um, last week and the um council liaisons asked me to report out to the council that the OSEC committee has requested an opportunity to um review and comment on the Quarry project. Um, and um so that wanted to just inform the council that uh that request had been made.
So are we deliberating that right now or we're gonna agendaize that?
Um. I mean, I I I think is unless you, I hear negative, we would, the staff would just move in that direction.
So that being like a workshop with OSEC or is that kinda like the same level as the Planning Commission?
No, 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 no. They're 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 not an approval authority. It may more similar to um in the past when we had, I think, the the Baylands E I R, we had committees that the, of the council that reviewed their sections and made comments. So I think it's more in that context.
Okay, so in in relation to the development and in the environment, yeah.
They requested an ex, um, it to be included in their work plan and wanted to get the opinion of the subcommittee if we would support them reviewing it as part of their their work for the year. And um I felt it was a good idea to allow them to do that. Um, and get their input on on that particular project.
Yeah, you know, I think getting their input on uh things as it relates to the mountain, you know, I think would be very helpful for us getting that feedback. So I I I'd be okay with that.
Same.
Tom, are we okay with that?
I, so these are comments, um, playing? This is just, they have no, they would not have any authority over the decision uh or make a recommendation. They're providing comments?
Yeah, that would be my understanding. They would be providing, reviewing comment.
Okay, um, yeah, provide, provided that they're providing, that it's comments and it's not part of the actual decision-making tree, um, then it's absolutely okay.
Thank you, Tom.
Yeah, thank you for the clarification.
Okay, so we'll now do our um countywide assignments and subcommittee reports. Um, I had a Lunafest meeting, uh, Councilmember O'Connell and I did. We are going to be having Lunafest at Mission Blue on May sixth. Um, there's really not a whole lot to report. We're hoping that because Brisbane has been like the number one Lunafest host for the last four years, that we might be able to get a speaker to come, possibly a director of one of the films or maybe the subject of one of the films to come and um, you know, just talk to the audience before or after. And um every year, we structure Lunafest a little bit differently. So this year um will be structured similar to the Cabaret that um was also at Mission Blue a few months ago. So there will be table seating and then also riser seating. Um, so it should be a fun event. Um, tickets should be available next week or so, so it's exciting. Anything you wanna add?
No, I think you covered that well.
Anyone have questions? Okay, and then also, Councilmember Cunningham and I had a public art advisory committee meeting. Um, we've spent several meetings interviewing other cities um about their master plans and reviewing master plans from other cities. And um we just had a meeting to synthesize what some of the running themes were from other cities um that they encountered in their master plan process. And um what, kind of what we liked, what some pitfalls were that we noticed. And then we directed staff to create an RFP and also looked at, look at other RFPs from other cities who have solicited um consultants for a public art master plan. Um, so we will begin looking at the language on our RFP at our next meeting next month. Do you wanna add anything?
It was a a really positive, uplifting and lively meeting. There was some great conversation and suggestions for, you know, figuring out some small doable projects that we could do in the meantime, like South San Francisco, they've been doing public art for years and yet they haven't finished their master plan. So it's not like you can't do anything until the master plan is completed. So we'll be looking for some fun little projects to do in the future.
Yes. Did you wanna make a comment? No.
Not on that.
Oh, okay. Would you like to go next, reporting out?
Sure. Um, I did wanna add that um on our OSEC subcommittee liaison meeting, um, that the committee asked for our input about the dark, their dark skies ordinance and how they were going to bring it back through staff to the city council. Whether it was going to be a fully certifiable dark skies ordinance um, or is, was going to be um less aspirational and easier to enforce and to get on the books. And I think that we gave them direction that we would rather see something come that was not necessarily dark skies um, certifiable, but would get the project going sooner rather than later before we lost, you know, the opportunities with upcoming projects that would be adding to the light pollution. And so we gave them that direction to move forward with what they had and with staff to come forward with those. and with staff to come forward with those plans. And I hope that that helps get something moving forward quickly.
I I would just add that um we also talked to them about differences with commercial and residential, having different demands and financial concerns, so they're going to look at that as well. Um and preserving stars on homes in Brisbane.
Nice. Uh Councilmember Lentz, would you like to go next?
Yeah, sure, um let's see, I I I believe the only subcommittee meetings I had were two infrastructure subcommittees with you, uh Clay.
One.
We had one that we updated, we got, it was more of like a refresher for you to get you more up to speed with um Sierra Point guidelines.
It says infrastructure.
I guess that was prior.
Point Subcommittee.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry, so yeah, okay, so we had the infrastructure one and just getting an update on uh the Crocker Park Trail. Um and Randy's not here, Clay's here and i- it looks like um, you know, there's a strong possibility that we could start uh doing that work this year, right? So that's uh, you know, really exciting though, uh you know, we had anticipated, you know, having some additional funding because of the the um the 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 makeup of the the path itself, we were gonna do the crushed uh granite stabilizer and then we said, no, let's do the the crushed finds and that the crushed finds would.
What's crushed finds?
It's uh.
Byproduct of of processing rock.
Yeah, there you could be very detailed, yeah.
It's very fine.
The find.
Very fine. First rock.
So that was supposed to provide additional money, you know, for us, because it was cheaper, cheaper process. But that was a recommendation that came from the consultant that uh we hired to do the master plan for the trail. Turned out that wasn't the case, so we're kinda like in the same, but that is a better product. So we're gonna move forward with that, but we're gonna have to find some money for some of the other amenities that we thought we were gonna perhaps use. And you want to add anything else to that one?
Sure, the original estimate was one million, the current price tag's one million two hundred thirty-five thousand five hundred fifty-two dollars. Grants paying for the bulk of this with about a hundred and fifteen thousand as a local match that comes from our general fund. Um you mentioned it's gonna be put out to bid. At this time, there's no money for lighting, that's anticipated to run about fifty thousand dollars and extra amenities will have to be considered later as we find ways to fund them.
Exactly, yeah, and then we also talked about uh twenty-five uh per place. Wanna?
Yeah, oh sure. Uh Committee was shown a blueprint for the future City Hall Annex at Twenty-Five Park Place. For anybody that doesn't know, that's across the street from the current City Hall. The plans to move the administrative offices like City Manager, City Clerk and Human Resources to the new Annex. That'll free up more space for planning and other staff functions in our main City Hall where the quarters have been pretty tight. The improvements needed to put the Annex uh into operation will hopefully begin this summer as an RFP will be issued soon. Uh the occupancy will depend on the progress of construction, but anticipated to be either later this year or early next year.
Yep.
That sound right?
Yes, and then just the, you know, um we're gonna, we're going to share the the property with uh North County Fire Authority, right, so we'll take approximately half the site. Their administrative um arm will take the other half.
Okay, is there any other um report outs that you either of you have?
Well, I mean, we did a Sierra Point, but uh but I guess we kinda talked about that, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I have one more.
Okay.
Okay. Peninsula Clean Energy, uh the board received an update on partnerships with community-based organizations to reach low-income and underserved communities. There's fourteen organizations that will receive grants this year and those are to increase awareness of PCE programs, bill discounts and provide education about clean energy, building electrification and electric vehicles. And this is a targeted outreach that is done in multiple languages, it was very successful, it was started in twenty eighteen and so that's continuing with additional funding. And another program that was highlighted, it's called the Home Upgrade Program, and this is really interesting. It offers absolutely no cost home repairs and electrification upgrades for low-income residents. And the program has been a real success to the point where now there's there's a gigantic waiting list, but we approved more funding to continue this. And the goal was uh to install at least one electrification measure in approximately two hundred homes. And that could be a heat pump water heater, induction cook top range, electric dryer or an HVAC heat pump to replace a furnace. And that supports the PCE goal of our region reaching a hundred percent decarbonization in buildings and transportation by twenty thirty-five. So just imagine your low income, your furnace goes out, PCE says, we'll handle it all, we'll we'll get someone to do a site assessment, hire the contractor, schedule the contractor, buy the new HVAC and install it and it costs you nothing. And they're doing that to accelerate, they the the discussion was that they're just low income, cannot afford to do all this electrification, so trying to get it going, and and this is really the important reminder here is Peninsula Clean Energy, you think of them as you're buying your electricity, but it's a community-owned electric company, there's no stockholders. So all the proceeds that come in from selling electricity go back into community programs. This is really a remarkable thing and it's gaining more and more momentum because with electrification, it's costly and PCE's got the money, they're putting it into practice. So this is still to have a power portfolio um sourced a hundred percent renewable energy by twenty twenty-five. Think of that, couple years, that's it.
Fantastic.
That's huge, thank you.
All right.
So I did wanna report out that I had one other subcommittee, which was the uh Airport Land Use Committee. We discussed the usual projects and some housing elements and that's about it.
Excellent, okay, moving on to Ren Communications. City Clerk, um okay.
We received correspondence from Denna Dilworth, Steve Kirkus, Denna Dilworth, Nancy Tierney and Elaine Straw.
Okay, thank you. Now we're moving on to oral communications number two, is there any member of the public wishing to speak at this time? Hand up from Michelle first, please make your comments brief as we're almost at the ten thirty deadline.
I will make them brief, I really want us to oppose the um HCP amendment. Um part of it is Mission Blue Butterfly Renew and Still Take Coverage for the Mission Blue Butterfly for the Quarry Development and any other proposed future developments. For example, unplanned parcels in the Brisbane Acres. Since the twenty thirteen HCP permit renewal, only renewed incidental take coverage for the Mission Blue Butterfly for the nineteen acre northeast ridge development and habitat management and monitoring activities of the twenty-eight hundred acres of conserved lands. Thus, we will need estimates of acres of Mission Blue Butterfly habitat that would be disturbed by the quarry development and any other proposed future developments. We've just had a severe loss of habitat um at the first of the year with the landslides that happened in Firth, Buckeye and Al. Part of this proposal is to uh add Sign Hill to the HCP to get more acreage so that we can take acreage from our mountain to be able to do the quarry development. This sucks, this is bad. And I am really upset that this, that that our city is contemplating pushing a change to the HCP to enable this development and other development when we have worked so hard to save the butterflies on this mountain when we've already sacrificed so much um because of the northeast ridge agreements we made with the county to be able to get Crocker Industrial Park. And I am I'm truly horrified that this is happening now and that this proposal has not even been before the council, thank you.
Thank you, Paul, Booskal. Super fast.
Super fast, Madam Mayor and Council, two things. One, I'm working with Recology uh to downturn their lights, those sodium vapor lights are what uh broadcast the most light pollution into Brisbane. So I'm gonna be meeting with their facility management and uh talk about options to be able to uh lessen that lighting. The other thing I'd like to ask from the council is if we could please purchase the Twenty-Three Club parking lot uh to be able to build low-income senior housing in Brisbane, which is much needed. This gentleman here, Ski, longtime Brisbane resident, has just been priced out of Brisbane. And if it wasn't for the Veterans Administration to help him find a place to live in Millbrae, who knows where he'd have to end up? And unfortunately, he's no longer to be a member in our community. And Brisbane is unlike most other cities, we are a community, we're not just a city. And so I really would hope that we could take care of our seniors and get them into low-income housing, and I think the Twenty-Three Club parking lot's only two million dollars. So if we could please put that on an agenda, I know the county's working on, what is it, aging? Aging.
Age-friendly cities.
Age-friendly cities, and Brisbane was just selected, so maybe between the Chamber, the County and whoever else it is, we could get that Twenty-Three Club parking lot purchased before it's sold because that's the only viable place to put a senior housing in Brisbane.
You should become part of CAFE.
Thank you, well, I've been waiting for their call, thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else? Okay.
Councilmembers, Mayor, uh I've been a resident of Brisbane for forty-three years. I lived at Forty-Four Renew Street for nineteen, since nineteen eighty. I was there for nineteen years and then I rented a house from the DeMarco Properties at Fifty-Five Enio, so I've been on Enio Street for forty-three years. I'm on my eightieth year of my life. I'm a veteran and I got evicted because the person I co-signed the lease with twenty-three years ago moved out. I lived in a in-law unit downstairs and she lived upstairs in the full house flat. She moved out and I got notified to vacate the residency. Uh I'm sure it was only because Mr. DeMarco realized the value or his property manager did regarding the market value today versus what I was paying from a lease I signed twenty-three years ago. The lease I signed was for one year and for the last twenty-two years, it's been month to month. So therefore, I'm no longer, thank God for the VA. I'm no longer gonna be a resident of Brisbane. Brisbane is my family. I have an identity in Brisbane. You know me as Ski, my real name is Richard Kautowski. And I'm sorry I have to leave. Now in December, well, I was notified that I had to leave on my birthday, November the first, by a letter from the attorneys at DeMarco Properties. In the middle of December, I went and I applied for residency at the Garden Apartments. I filled out the application, two months went by. I went to go to see what's going on, I haven't heard from them. And they told me that I was on a list for four to six years for residency there. So I asked if I could see my application or where it was. They looked in their files, they looked all over the place, finally they looked on the floor with a stack of papers and that's where my application was two months after I had applied. Now, there's supposed to be priorities for people who have been residents for Brisbane for a long time. I think forty-three years qualifies me for that. Plus my age, plus being a veteran. So I just don't know if you people have any influence over their process of determining who's gonna be at the top of the list. I know four to six years, a lot of times people pass away, people move on, people are no longer interested in the Garden Apartments. And they told me they had no vacancies, at the time they told me they had no vacancies, I knew there was one vacancy at the time. Then two weeks ago, I received a letter notifying me they had no vacancies and I know for a fact they have two vacancies. So I have to leave Brisbane and I'm sorry. It's like I'm being exiled from my home. God bless Brisbane, thank you.
Take care, Ski, sorry.
Okay, is there anyone else wishing to speak at this time? Seeing no one, I'm gonna go ahead and adjourn this meeting at ten thirty-six.